All right, good afternoon, everybody. For those of you on the screen, if you can hear me okay, just kind of wave your hand. We're, uh, there you go. Thank you. We're doing this remotely. So it is, um, uh, today is Wednesday, March 25th, and we are reconvening our regularly scheduled Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees monthly meeting. We have just adjourned our closed session and we did have four items to discuss there, but we are going to continue with the second closed session. Uh, right now, and I'm sorry, Madam Secretary, I believe the time of that was 5:32. And right now, I'm gonna call on Jackie Han, who is our Board Secretary. She's gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you are able to, please stand. Um, and then when we conclude the Pledge of Allegiance, I have a statement that I'll be reading on behalf of the district.
I'm gonna turn around and face the flag here. Ready, begin.
There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, um, my name is Vivian Malauulu, and it's important to note that this is our very first 100% remote meeting. This is our first Zoom meeting using the Zoom technology. Our trustees and our staff are practicing social distancing in response to the coronavirus, COVID-19. We are using video conference technology to hold today's meeting for the very first time. So if you're at home, if you're watching on your mobile device or on your laptop or desktop, thank you for tuning in. Please bear with us. Uh, we are pushing through as best we can under these circumstances. Governor Gavin Newsom issued an executive order that declared a state of emergency. The executive order also updated the Brown Act regarding public meetings in response to this health crisis that we are currently facing. Today's remote meeting meets the updated Brown Act requirements. I would like to thank you. I would like to thank the members of the public and our staff, our, my colleagues on the board, as well as our college administration, who have worked so diligently to make this happen. And I just want to let you know that we did have a test run on Monday evening. We had a practice Zoom meeting. So it was great to be able to, um, fine tune a lot of the details then so that we could be as smooth as possible for you now. For everyone who is tuning in and watching, everyone who's participating with public comments, this is brand new territory for us to hold our meeting this way. We'd like to thank you in advance for your patience and understanding. Again, this is our first all-remote meeting. Uh, we've already concluded with the Pledge of Allegiance, and now I'd like to go, Madam Secretary, if you can please do a roll call.
Virginia Baxter.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Sodhi Bakchow Inta.
Here.
Doug Otto.
Here.
Sunny Zia.
Present.
And Student Trustee Jimenez.
Here.
Thank you.
Good work, everybody. We do have a report out on closed session items. Uh, once again, we have four items on the agenda for closed session, but we were only able to, um, discuss a couple of them. And right now, I'm going to report out item 1.4. Let me go back to that. Item 1.4 is pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. In closed session, the Board took action to not renew the contract of an academic administrator. The vote was unanimous with all Board members present. And, uh, now I'm gonna defer to our Board Counsel, Mr. Vincent Ewing, who will report out on another item.
Thank you, President Malauulu. The Board met with Counsel in closed session on Agenda Item 1.6, Anticipated Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Sections 549, 56.9D2, and 549, 56.9D4. We discussed two cases. Um, there are four total to discuss. The other two will be discussed in the second closed session. During the closed session, uh, the Board took action. A motion was made by Board Trustee Inta and seconded by Board Trustee Otto, and the vote was to, uh, pick action four to one. The nay vote was Board Trustee Zia. That concludes my closed session report.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, we are going to continue on the agenda with item 2.5. Madam Secretary, are there any public comments on Agenda Items?
I have none, Madam President.
Thank you. And item 2.6. Now, um, as many of you know, because we have had a series of special meetings in the last few weeks, we do have, uh, a brand-new interim Superintendent President. So I would like to formally and officially welcome Ms. Luanne Bynum back to Long Beach City College. And, uh, this is her first meeting, and unfortunately, her first meeting has to be under these circumstances. Luanne, we'd like to welcome you. And now it is, uh, you just got here and you're already on the hook for a Superintendent President report.
Thank you very much, President Malauulu. I want to, first of all, I want to express my appreciation to the Board of Trustees for the honor of serving as your interim Superintendent President during this transition. I love this college. I'm thrilled to be back here, and I really appreciate your, um, the trust and confidence that, that you have shown. I also want to thank the faculty, the staff, and people in the community for the very warm welcome that I've been getting. That's very heartwarming as well, and it's nice to know that everybody does care about this college as much as we all do. Um, my first week has been very, very busy, as you can imagine. I didn't think that one of the first things I'd have to do is come and close the campuses, but, um, I know that we all agree that these are unprecedented times, and what we're doing now is in support of our city and our state and our nation and our students. Our first concern is making sure that our faculty, staff, and students are safe, and, um, our next concern is making sure that we provide as much support for academic continuity as we possibly can. The Board can be very reassured that the collaborative effort between faculty, staff, and, um, the teamwork that has existed here at this campus before I came has been the very best, and I speak, I think it speaks to what makes Long Beach City College the best. Um, I also wanted to tell the Board also that I didn't inform local, um, state and federal elected officials of what has been going on at Long Beach City College with the COVID virus, so they have information and can be assured that we're doing everything we possibly can for our students and our staff. Um, this is uncharted territory for our students, for everybody, but also for our students. And I want to encourage our students to stay in class and continue. I know it's difficult, it's challenging, but, um, if they stay connected to their instructors and their classmates, I think it's going to help them continue and progress on their career path, as well as give them some support during this time, because it's very difficult for all of them. Um, if our students are frustrated, please, um, the COVID-19 website that we have has a section for students with all kinds of support help for them as well. So I want to remind them to be able to, um, uh, use that resource, because we're here to help. Um, we're gonna have a more thorough presentation about basic needs tonight, but, um, it's just really, I'm really proud of the staff and the problem solving they've done to keep the Viking Vault food pantry open. It'll be open on Tuesdays from 12 to 3 for grab and go, and we're still discussing how we can expand that to make sure that our students are getting what they need. And also, the Basic Needs Program has partnered with people in the community to give, um, information about available housing and referrals for housing, and that contact information is on the COVID page as well. Um, we're proud of our foundation for putting a notice on the website also to ask for donations for our students. We, we need more now probably than ever, and I would encourage all of us to be good Vikings and make donations for our students on that website. Um, as I mentioned, our number-one priority is safety and security of our students and all of our staff, as well as continuity. Um, the faculty have undertaken a phenomenal job of moving their classes to remote teaching and learning, and it happened very quickly. Um, you'll hear more about this tonight, but I think we have close to 2,000 courses that have been put online. There are not that many that haven't been able to make that change. Those that can't do remote learning, we're going to be working with them to continue to figure out how we can make sure that our students are completing their courses. Um, every member of this campus has risen way above and beyond to get this done during the transition. So I just want to thank everybody who is a member of our Viking family for their flexibility, their adaptability, and their willingness to problem solve. It's amazing the kinds of decision-making we've had to do in the last couple or three weeks, and it's working. I said in my email to the, uh, first email to the campus that Vikings are warriors. Um, in times of uncertainty, these warriors are the ones that stand up tall. And so just together as the Vikings in this Long Beach City College, I think we're just gonna be able to get through this. And I think we'll end up being a better college and learn some things from this experience as well. Um, I've asked each of the vice presidents to give updates in the presentation of the COVID virus, and I think you'll get more detailed information and have a chance to ask questions. But again, thank you for the opportunity to come back and serve at the college that I love. And that ends my report. Thank you. Vivian? Vivian? Justine Malauulu. She finished.
I saw that. I'm on mute. Sorry about that. Okay, I apologize. So I said, "Thank you, Luanne, and welcome once again." And I'd like to move on the agenda to item 2.7, which is our ASB report. Alyssa, are you there?
Hi, everyone. All righty. Um, so, good evening, everyone. Um, I'd like to start my report by acknowledging and giving my personal thanks to everyone on this line. I really have been very humbled to be a part of an incredibly dedicated group, even with everything going on in our personal lives. So, thank you. Um, with our school moving almost fully online, the ASB Cabinet has been really hard at work transitioning our advocacy. A huge, absolutely huge shout-out to our amazing advisor, Kim Hammond, who really took on the burden of figuring out Zoom, finding new means for us to post our documents, and organizing so many of the moving parts, so I and the rest of Cabinet can focus as students first, uh, which was an amazing support for us. Uh, that being said, the Cabinet has shifted its focus to the things we can actually control during this time. Uh, everyone has been delegated to an ASB committee like elections, CSC, and legislatures, and will be creating action plans for their individual successors. We are also upping our Instagram and social media presence with each Cabinet member assigned to come up with a post specific to their unique constituent groups. Uh, overall, we're trying our best to look forward to the next term while navigating these pretty unprecedented times. Uh, it's been amazing to see the school really, really rally to support one another. Um, our student trustee will be highlighting the things she'll be focusing on, and I'll be highlighting the rest of Cabinet for the rest of my trustees meetings. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Alyssa, and thank you for being, uh, flexible and hanging out with us via Zoom. 2.9, this is our LBCC FA Bargaining President Report. Um, one thing, Diana, before you begin, I did get a text saying that the live stream, uh, is coming across a little low in terms of sound, so I'd like to ask everyone if you could please speak up. Uh, that way that our webcast can, can pick up the sound a little better. Diana, are you there?
Uh, Chair, I believe you skipped the student trustee.
Oh, I don't have, um, I sure do. I'm so, you know, I'm, I'm 0-for-2 right now. So, item 2.8, you're right, item 2.8. I am so sorry, our student trustee report. There you go.
That's okay. Thank you, Vivian.
You're welcome.
So, uh, to start off my report with many changes students are settling into the new online position, um, one thing that has been particularly comforting is the efforts made by the Viking Vault to secure students with food at this time. I know that I participated in those events. Um, recently, I did participate in the Last Love Market that was held March 16 on a Monday, and it was wonderful to be able to hold that event while still holding or complying with the CDC standards of standing six feet apart. So I know that it did make a lot of students feel grateful and blessed that we're still, um, despite the situation that we're in, that we were still, um, you know, giving to the students and making sure that they were fed during these times. Since then, most events have been canceled, and their, the student, um, interaction has slowed down. But with that being said, I'm working on, um, still getting the student voice and, uh, through social, social media and surveys. So, um, one way I'm, uh, doing that is the Student Services Department is working on a resource guide for students, and on that guide, we're adding the ASB Instagram, which is @LBCCASB. We hope that students use that platform for information, to participate in polls, to express any other concerns, just so that ASB is aware and as leaders, we can, um, alleviate their concerns and, and, you know, give them, um, an online support. Uh, lastly, one student concern has been brought to my, my attention, and is that some students don't have a computer or laptop at home. I did some, uh, you know, research, and I, right now, I'm working directly with Dr. Mike Munoz, uh, um, who, we're in a process to implement a laptop lending program. So that has been a great blessing, I think, to solve that issue. I know that that, this online transition can be, um, wearing for some students, but I definitely feel that this, the, the school is already ahead on, uh, giving them the support that they need in, in this changing time. So, yes, that's end of my report there, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate you, and I'm sorry that, uh, I accidentally skipped over you, but thank you.
That's okay.
And I love how you are able to represent students. Uh, now we're gonna move on to 2.9. Let me double-check my notes here, and now we have our LBCC FA Bargaining President Report. Diana?
Good evening, everybody. Um, with the COVID-19 threat, it's been a rough two weeks for the college, as well as the nation. Uh, yet I want to com, oops, sorry. Yet I want to compliment the Board of Trustees for identifying the interim Superintendent President, Luanne Bynum, who has come in providing a steady hand and a vision to move us forward. Most importantly, I wanted to commend all of the vice presidents, led by the Executive Vice President, Dr. Kathy Scott, who acted as a real team in unison with each other, providing us with the leadership we really needed at this time. So I really want to thank all the vice presidents. We really appreciate it. During this time, the nation, the state, and the college is a ship capsiding, but thankfully for the leadership team here at Long Beach City College, um, they've been able to steady the ship. Um, we're still in for some choppy waters, but we're somewhat balanced, and we're moving forward at this time. So, most importantly, I wanted to thank the faculty, staff, and students. But in this case in particular, I want to thank the faculty who've moved 1,976 sections of classes. That's almost 80% of all classes that are taught here from face-to-face instruction to remote instruction in a matter of three to five days. This was no easy task. Um, it was truly a heavy lift for many of the faculty. I know some faculty who were creating, designing, and moving lectures from six different sections, uh, to Canvas, but they did so as a commitment to the students and as educators. So, in this past two weeks, I've seen real camaraderie among the faculty, colleagues reaching out to each other, um, helping to train one another and comforting, um, one another. So I can't say enough about how proud I am of the faculty and how I applaud them. In closing, um, hopefully in the coming weeks, we'll all adjust to this new virtual world of living, virtual meetings and virtual student appointments. Um, but as part of this, um, FA is eager to continue our negotiations with the district, hoping that the contract negotiations can be settled quickly so that the college can once again concentrate on returning to a fall semester as we've experienced, experienced in the past. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Diana. We're gonna move on, and by the way, I think we, we all agree with you in, in that, share that same sentiment of gratitude. Uh, we'll move on to item 2.10, which is our AFT Bargaining President Report, and I see Robert there.
Hi, good afternoon, President Malauulu. Board members, interim Superintendent Luanne Bynum and esteemed members of the Board. AFT wanted to welcome back interim Superintendent Luanne Bynum and thank her for coming out of retirement to help the college at this time where we have great need. I wanted to report that AFT has been working with the faculty management and, uh, to support our students in unusual times with the coronavirus. Most of the classified staff are working remotely using their personal phones, home internet, to continue to keep the college open. Unfortunately, there are still employees on campus. The largest group is the custodian staff, who's working tirelessly to clean our campus, and I wanted everyone to realize what a, you know, what a hard job that is for them to be, to be cleaning and keeping the college going. Thank you all for all your, all you're doing, and we're really happy that, that you've moved so proactively to get everyone on, online and off the campus. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Robert. Once again, I'm sure we all agree with you. Item 2.11, this is our Certified Hourly Instructors, a CHI Bargaining President Report, and I see Karen there.
Hi, um, good evening, Superintendent President Bynum. Welcome back to LBCC, and, well, uh, good evening to you, um, Board President Malauulu and the Board of Trustees. Um, just wanted to report that, you know, the district in CHI agreed upon an MOU for part-time faculty to address our special circumstances and working conditions and sick leave during this unprecedented time. Um, so I need to thank Jean, um, can't thank Jean Duran without actually also thanking Susan Salazar, um, for being so quick with this. The MOU has been emailed to all part-time faculty. Um, I've heard from a few part-time faculty about the amount of work required to get their classes online, not surprising, uh, because it does take time. Um, I think we were encouraging as many part-time faculty as possible to get certified in online teaching last year. So, um, hopefully, we can continue with that, you know, and just help, you know. I don't want them to feel like they're doing this for nothing, but if we can go ahead and get them certified, that would really be awesome. I also, uh, want to thank, um, a bunch of people. So I definitely want to thank Dr. Scott and all the other vice presidents. Um, the last time the Board had a special, your special meeting, I made some remarks about being concerned about if this was the right time to be, you know, um, you know, changing it, making big changes. And I just have to say that, um, this college moved so quickly to, you know, help students to transition face-to-face classes to remote classes. And, uh, Dr. Scott, you, um, from the very beginning, can, uh, included part-time faculty in all your emails, and you continued to include them. Um, I was just amazed at the speed at which, you know, training's open. I have to really thank the whole OLEC team for all of that and just getting part-timers into these workshops. Um, I have colleagues at other colleges who were still wondering sort of what was going on at their own college when we had already moved, um, ahead. And so that was just really, really impressive to me. Um, so, need to thank the Board for your leadership. Um, I personally have benefited from the confer Zoom workshops. I took them twice. Um, but I'm just, I'm just grateful and really proud of Long Beach City College right now. So, that's my report.
Thank you very much, Karen, and for the third time, we agree with you also. Thank you very much. Um, moving on to item 2.12, this is the reordering of the agenda. Are there any requests at this time to reorder the agenda? All right. Seeing and hearing none, we're gonna move on to item 2.13. This is a request for public comments specifically on items 2.14 and items 2.15. Jackie, were there any requests, Madam Secretary?
No, I did not receive any.
Okay, and that concludes Section 2 of the agenda. We're moving on to Section 3. This is the Superintendent President, um, uh, Ms. Bynum, Item 3.1, any Board request to you? And, uh, I know that, uh, you and I met earlier, and I mentioned to you that this is, uh, probably new on the agenda from the last time you were at the college, and this is something that our previous Superintendent President, um, added to the agenda, and we did have a discussion about it, and then the majority of the Board at the time didn't want to continue with that. So I wanted you to, to have an opportunity to weigh in. If, uh, this is going to be an item that you'd like to keep or if you had any opinion, and, uh, you know, it is a discussion-action item.
Well, at this point, I'd like to have some more time to take a look at it and have some discussion with you all as well. It's, uh, quite a long list. I know there's ways that we can keep track of that. Um, you know, um, some Boards will just say at the end of the Board meeting, are, is there any new business that you want to put on? But, um, I would, I would, if, if okay with all of you, I'd like to be able to have some time and take a look at it and study it.
I'm okay with that. I don't know if any of my colleagues. I see Trustee Zia there with her hand up.
Yeah, while I, um, think it's a good idea for you to take your time and review it, Luanne, I think, um, it's important that we continue with our acts of transparency and keep this on the agenda as the Board has, uh, decided previously and, um, as Chair Malauulu indicated earlier. So, um, I don't think, um, where it should be changed. That's just my perspective and the perspective of the majority of the Board as we previously voted on.
Well, I, I wouldn't change it. I would refer back to you all if you decide as a group, um, the Board as a whole, that you want to keep it on, mindfully, that, because it's in place. If you feel like, um, you need to make a change on that, I would leave that up to you.
I, I think we've already made our decision, and we shouldn't revisit that.
Okay.
Okay, Trustee Otto?
Trustee.
I'm sorry, Trustee Inteck. I saw Trustee Otto's hand before I heard you.
No problem. I'll wait till afterwards to go next.
You're on, you're on mute. Trustee Otto, you're on mute. Trustee Otto.
Am I now?
Yes.
I'll get this down before, uh, when we get off the, uh, when we stop doing this, I'll probably have figured it out by then. So, um, I, I disagree with, with Trustee Zia for a couple of reasons. Uh, first of all, I don't think it's a good argument that we voted on it once and we can't revisit it. Uh, in fact, I can think of a couple circumstances where, uh, we've tried to revisit things and, uh, and, uh, and I think we should revisit this. Our meetings go on for an extraordinarily long period of time compared to almost any other community college district. So that leads me to believe that we ought to ask the question of, what does this add to what it is that we do? Uh, I think it was started, uh, to keep track of what was perceived by someone to be a problem. Uh, I think it's a new day. I don't see a problem. I think it's the kind of thing where you can get this information individually and see if it's a problem, and probably save 20 to 30 minutes, uh, at a meeting, uh, because you never do anything with it. You just kind of look at it, and then people talk about it, and they talk about it for quite some time. And, uh, I think I've pointed out in the past that there are things that I think... And I think I've pointed out in the past that there are things that I think are not to be listed as requests. I know I had a request when I happened to mention to somebody once that I'd love to get a copy of what somebody said because they made remarks. They said, sure. And the next thing I knew it was on the list of something that, of a request that I had made. And so it seems to me to be not a waste of time to keep track of it, but a waste of time to agendize it. And so that's why I would support eventually, it's not on the agenda tonight, relooking at this as something we need to do on a monthly basis. That's it.
Thank you, trustee Otto. Trustee Antek.
Yeah, I also would like to object to having this on future agendas. As this document has developed, it is riddled with errors and misunderstandings that I think is really problematic to continue to put it on the board agenda. I don't see this as an ongoing document that's related to the business of the college. There are so many times of an email or a phone call that ended up here or the item was closed improperly or without concurrence from the board that the actual direction was actually followed. And this really became, I think, a troublesome document that just doesn't have any merit anymore. And I think it's good that our interim superintendent president Biden has a chance to look through this and be aware of it. But I don't see it serving any other fruitful purpose or merit for the board. That's all I have to say on it.
Okay, thank you. Whatever is the pleasure of the board. You know, it is agendized as a discussion action item. So, you know, we can, I can move on to the next agenda item or if there's another issue that you'd like to continue discussing on this item. I'm open to whatever is the pleasure of the board. All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll go on to item, section four on the agenda, which is presentations. Item 4.1 is a basic needs overview and I will defer that to Vice President Dr. Munoz.
Chairman Malauulu, can I make a suggestion with regard to 3.1? Why, I don't feel comfortable pretty much at any meeting saying, oh, there's no staff report. This is what I think, and then having to vote on something. So what I would recommend instead is that we refer this to our interim superintendent president to evaluate it, give us a staff report as to the pros and cons, and bring it back at the next meeting so that we can consider it. And I think that would be the responsible way to handle it as to whether to continue it on the agenda.
Okay.
So just a suggestion, I don't think we need to vote on that. For God's sakes, we don't have to vote on everything. It's just a suggestion.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, trustee Otto. We'll go on to section four on the agenda, 4.1, Dr. Munoz, Basic Needs.
Is mic on? Okay, are you all able to hear me now? Yeah, here we go. I apologize, I'm having internet issues. So thank you, good evening, Board President Malauulu, members of the Board of Trustees, Superintendent President Bynum and the campus community. Tonight I'll be providing a presentation overview on our Basic Needs program. And so you should have access to the presentation. Dario is going to assist me and have the presentation available for you. So as we move through, I'll cue Dario and we'll move through the presentation. So the agenda tonight, we'll be providing an overview of our LBCC student demographics as well as basic need statistics. We'll talk a little bit about our basic need centers that we have recently opened, both at the PCC and LAC campuses. We'll talk a little bit about our peer navigators and referral services as well as the additional LBCC basic need services, some marketing and advocacy supports that we've implemented, as well as we'll discuss the LBCC Student Housing Feasibility Study, RFP update, and then an acknowledgement of the LBCC Basic Needs Team. So next slide. So to just start off and provide some context, a little bit about our LBC students and the demographics and the students we serve. So this chart in front of you shows, really kind of demonstrates the need of our students. So of our total enrollments of the 35,000-plus students, we could see that 69% of our students qualify for financial aid, which means there's some unmet financial resources and needs of our students. So this really demonstrates a high student need on our campus. Next slide. And so when we start to think about the basic needs of our students, there's been different studies that have been conducted, both in the state, nationally about trends for food and housing insecurity of community college students. And so just here are some basic statistics out of some recent studies. So 1 in 20 UC students experience homelessness. 1 in 10 CSU students experience homelessness. 1 in 5 California community college students, approximately 20%, experience homelessness and 3 in 5 experience housing insecurity. So as you can see at the community college level, this is a significant issue and barrier for our students when we think about student success and reducing equity gaps. And so I think the next slide, if we can go to the next slide, when we really think about the story of supporting our students on this campus at LBCC and really addressing the basic needs issues of our students, much of the work that we've done in the last 18 months, two years here at LBCC really originated with some of the support through our foundation. So the LBCC Foundation has an associate group called Helping the Homeless. And as you can see, we have two of our trustees that have been very instrumental, that service officers for that associate group, that have really brought attention and shed light to the issues of basic needs on our campus. And so the work that we're going to share with you tonight and a lot of the work that's occurred over the last 18 months has been, I think, in direct response to the advocacy and the support of the homeless associate group. And so I want to also take a moment to acknowledge Dr. Baxter and trustee Zia for their efforts and supports around basic needs. So the next slide. So let's talk a little bit about the Basic Need Center. I'm very, very excited to share with the board that within the last month, we've opened two new basic need facilities. When I first arrived, the Basic Need Centers were, the Viking Vault was in a, I don't want to call it a storage unit, but it wasn't a very large facility. And I think the team and everybody did the best that we could with the space that we had. But we really saw the need to expand and to be able to really expand the Basic Need Center. So now we have a location located at LAC. It's in E131. In the next slide, I'll show you some photos. But it's a really great facility. Thanks to the support of Vice President Jeanne Klein and the folks in the facilities, we were able to secure some additional fundings, make some repairs to that room. And like I said, when I show you the before and after pictures, I think you'll be quite impressed. It's a very large space that will allow not only for the housing of the Viking Vault, which is our food pantry, but also allow for a program manager to be located as well as to have different support services like CalFresh and other social services partnerships, excuse me, that can be present and rotate throughout the Basic Need Center. So when does this happen? Like I said, it occurs Monday through Thursday. The Viking Vault is open from 12 to 3 p.m. At PCC, it's located in QQ 107. And we've co-located the Viking Vault and the Basic Need Center along with some of our other support services at PCC such as our Guardian Scholars and our Justice Scholars Programs. Next slide, please. And so what you can see here are some before and after photos. To the left, you'll see LAC. And so the top left corner photo you'll see is the old classroom that we were able to convert into the Viking Vault and the Basic Need Center. And so now at the bottom left-hand side, you can see some of the pictures. So the carpet's been replaced, it's been replaced with flooring. The ceiling tiles have all been redone, there's been painting. So we've definitely refreshed the space. When you look to the right side of the slide, you'll see PCC. So we had taken a former counselor office and converted it along with a storage room to expand a Viking Vault at PCC, which is housed in QQ 107. Next slide, please. So you could see we have the Basic Need Center. And so with the support with the Viking Vault, how we've really been able to expand the Viking Vault and the food pantry services has been through deliveries through U.S. Foods, which has been funded through our Hunger Free allotment, as well as we are entering into an agreement with the Los Angeles Regional Food Bank, which starts actually now. And I need to acknowledge and thank the support of the foundation. The foundation was instrumental. And we had to go through a process to be eligible with the LA Regional Food Bank. And so the foundation had to revise their Articles of Incorporation to be able to do this. And so this was very, this took some time. And so I really want to acknowledge the effort and support of the foundation. As well as you can see a list of some of our donors. We've been very, we have a very, very philanthropic community here in Long Beach and a lot of folks have really stepped up and helped us. And so the LBCC Foundation, Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, and which we'll talk more about some of those events and services that we've received, the National Council of Jewish Women of Long Beach, Long Beach Temple Israel, Rotary Club of Long Beach, LBCC staff and faculty, as well as some anonymous donors as well. Next slide. So just want to go a little bit deeper into some of the donation highlights this year. Like I said, we've been very unfortunate to receive a lot of community support and really due to the advocacy of many of our trustees. So you could see the LBCC Foundation helping the homeless fundraiser event, which took place in November, had the opportunity to be present and at that raised over $6,000 for our students. So that's amazing. And so thank you again to trustee Baxter and trustee Zia for supporting that. The Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters donated twice. And you can see back on September 21st, 2018, as well as September 6th, 2019, with boxes of food. The Rotary Club of Long Beach, very instrumental. They provided our students with 750 backpacks back in October. And so that was a, and I know that our interim program manager for Basic Needs was, you know, there to receive the items on a Saturday. And so we really appreciate their support as well. National Council of Jewish Women of Long Beach provided 1,000 individually grab-and-go items. And then lastly, Persian New Year provided us with 150 bags of food and toiletry and we're expecting that to come soon. So again, just really want to extend our deep appreciation and gratitude to our community partners that have really stepped forward in this time and been here for our students. So thank you to them. Next slide, please. So oftentimes folks ask us, okay, so tell us a little bit about the Viking Vault. What's the volume? What's the demonstrated need? How many students are coming through? And so just to give you some context, for student visits between August 26th and March 9th. So really this is pre-COVID. We're going to provide an update on basic needs in the COVID presentation, but really thinking about from the start of the semester through up until about the start of COVID, we had 1,954 visits from LAC and about 1,286 visits at PCC, as well as we provided what's called Love Markets, which is an outdoor market. So oftentimes, students have to go and present themselves at the Viking Vault in order to be able to access some of the food support. This is taking it out into the middle of the campus and allowing folks to kind of walk up and get what they need. And so we've been able to support that as well. Part of the Love Market, we have students pick up a full meal. So there's chicken and sides and desserts. And so you can see we had two events, one on February 17th and one on February 19th, that served somewhere between 168 students and 134 students respectively. Next slide. So we also have mini vaults. So we recognize that, you know, the Viking Vaults are kind of our large-scale operations for each campus, but there are other places on campus where we are providing students grab-and-go options. And so you can see some locations on campus, the Student Health Center, LAC and PCC, GG 117 and A1010. We have grab-and-gos in faculty offices, in the LAC library, as well as athletics. So we try to be thoughtful about making sure that there's grab-and-go items dispersed throughout the campus as well. Next slide, please. So again, in thinking about how we best leverage community resources and supports in supporting our students with basic needs, we've been partnering with CalFresh to help students essentially access CalFresh benefits. And so we have a CalFresh specialist on campus four times per month to assist students with information about CalFresh as well as supporting them with their applications. And so from the period between August and March 4th, we've been able to support about 185 students in prescreening their eligibility with 53 students submitting CalFresh applications. And we also provide information for CalFresh on the Basic Needs website as well. Next slide, please. We also have supported students through our Better Breakfast events. And so this occurs the first week of the month on both campuses. And we serve approximately 150 to 190 students with a warm breakfast. And so this is an event that is very well received by our students. And so we appreciate the efforts of partnering with SMB Foods and the Student Affairs Team in putting this on. Next slide. So one of the things that we have been able to do in the last 18 months is leverage different categorical resources that we have access to as well as partnering with our foundation. And so just to kind of share with you, we received $188,000 for the fiscal year 2018 through 2019 through the Hunger Free Campus Allotment, which came from the Chancellor's Office. And this is set to expire in June of 2020. So through those resources, we've been able to leverage those resources to provide support. And you can see kind of the budget, we presented it in the spirit of being transparent. So we've been able to, with LA Food Bank as well as with U.S. Foods and Bonds, about $113,000 has been allocated for groceries. About another $39,000 has been allocated for catering with SMB Foods to provide grab-and-go items as well as the Better Breakfast. Some resources have been identified to support student assistance who are very instrumental in the implementation of the Viking Vault and some of the different activities that we are offering to support our students, as well as about $10,000 for technology and office supplies and about $9,000 for promotional materials as well as duplicating. Also, just to let you know, and it says new at the bottom, so this is a new slash, we just received word recently from the Chancellor's Office that we will be receiving approximately $700,000 to support College Homeless and Housing Insecure Pilot Program. And so we were noticed on March 2nd that we were eligible to receive those funds. And so we will be working in partnership with some of our other community partners to develop a budget proposal that we will be submitting to the Chancellor's Office relatively soon, within the next few weeks. The next slide, please. Peer Navigators and Referral Services. So we've been very fortunate to be able to have a peer navigator on this campus, on both our campuses, I should say. And so again, thanks to trustee Zia and some of her support, we've been able to connect with Supervisor Janice Hahn's office to be able to receive support and funding for peer navigators. So I'll talk a little bit about what that looks like. And so the peer navigators essentially is to improve, is someone who can work directly with our students to improve linkages between the college and homeless services provided across LA County. It's intended to streamline referral processes as well as enhance communications between and amongst partnerships. And so here at LBCC, we have the Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority, Daniel Gonzalez, representing as one of our peer navigators, as well as Tamara Lincoln through the Harbor Interface Services. And so we're looking at, you know, again, to expanding more peer navigators now that we are receiving that additional funding from the Chancellor's Office. So we're hoping to expand that as well. As well as the referral services, students can also meet with a Basic Needs Program Manager by appointment or walk-in to be able to be referred to services, as well as we've been partnering with Hoboness on College Focus Rapid been partnering with Hoboness on college-focused rapid rehousing. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we are working really diligently with and on is to develop an emergency student aid and grant program here at LBCC. So under AB 943, which is a recent, some recent legislation that was passed, this allows us to essentially leverage some of our student equity dollars to support students through direct student aid. And so we are piloting this spring 2020, some direct student aid through our student equity funds on a case-by-case basis to support students in the form of books, foods, and grants, and grants, excuse me. And so we are actually, and we'll talk more about this in the update with COVID, we are going to leverage some of these equity dollars again to meet students' needs just in time right now through this crisis. But as of spring 2020, we were really looking at it on a pilot basis. There will be a formal implementation of the Emergency Aid and Grant Program for fall 2020, which again, will be able to leverage student equity funds, as well as some of the other resources that we have access to, to provide some of our students. Next slide, please. We also provided student support with a Viking Closet. And so you can see we have a location off the LAC Nordic Lounge, and this came as a grant from ASB, and it's ran by the Alpha Gamma Sigma Club on campus. And the idea is that it's a place where students can come and obtain articles of clothing that they may be in need of. Next slide. We're also making sure that we are compliant in providing our students with access to showers. So we know that many of our students who are experiencing housing insecurities may need access to showers. So we provide access to showers on both campuses, which is compliant with the California Ed Code 76011. Next slide. I know, and I think at the last board meeting or the previous board meeting, I was able to provide an update on our Strong Beach Bus Pilot Program, but again, just want to highlight this as a way that we're meeting basic needs, transportation being one of them. We launched the pilot program at fall 19 with a full expansion to all full-time students in good standing for spring 2020. Just to give you a highlight for February 3rd, through this part of the semester, for the month of February, we had about 10,000 student rides, representing 552 unique students. So it's definitely a well-received program and utilized and accessed by our students. Next slide. Marketing. So we spend a lot of time trying to make sure that we get the information out to students and that students are informed, so informed of the supports we have for basic needs. So we redesigned the Basic Needs Program and actually asked a recommendation from our peer navigator. She said in a meeting, you know, it would make sense to include the information about basic needs in the dropdown of college services or under resources. And so now if you, we were able to make that change. So if you look at resources and you hover over resources, the dropdown menu will drop down and Basic Needs is now there. So it creates, you know, instead of having students having to click on four or five different sites to get to basic needs, it's now has prominence on our college website. And you can see these are one of our flyers promoting Viking Vault. We also have an Instagram where we're sharing information. Next slide, please. We have, we send emails out to the campus community informing them of how they can refer students. We conduct classroom visits. We developed a Healthy Viking Resource Guide, which highlights housing, food and groceries, legal services, supports for LGBTQ+ students, clothing, information about sexual assault prevention, medical and dental care, mental health, disability, and on-campus resources. Next slide. In the area of advocacy, we continue to be visible out in the community and with community partners to partner and bring awareness around basic needs to our campus community. And so Long Beach Continuum of Care, our LTE Basic Needs Manager, Di, has been a board member of that. The Long Beach Homeless Coalition has monthly meetings for service providers and organizations that we attend. The City of Long Beach Homeless Service Advisory Committee meets monthly, and we engage with that. We sent a team from the college to the Real College Basic Needs Summit, which occurred in December at Laney College in Oakland, as well as we sent a team to the California Higher Education Basic Needs Alliance, which took place in Costa Mesa this past February. Next slide, please. Again, thinking about advocacy and continuing our efforts, other city Long Beach initiatives that we've been engaged with has been everyone, Home Long Beach Task Force for 2018, Safe Parking. So as you know, the City of Long Beach has been piloting a safe parking program, so making sure we're aware of that. The Year-Round Homeless Shelters in North Long Beach location is under construction, as well as the Affordable Housing Construction and Inclusionary Housing Plan. So that's just some of the advocacy efforts that are happening city-wide in this realm. Next slide, please. Some other ways we're trying to engage our community. We will be hopefully forming an LBCC Basic Needs Advisory Board, which we're planning to launch in fall of 2020. And this is an attempt to engage local community organizations in helping, kind of guiding the leadership and the priorities, as well as identifying resources for our campus of basic needs efforts and identifying best practices. Next slide, please. So as you know, and I can always defer to Vice President Dreampoint at any time if there are additional questions about this slide. The college is engaged in a student housing feasibility study. And so there's the timeline regarding the study. And so we expect in April to bring to the board a recommendation to ratify a contract with Brailsford and Dunleavy to conduct a study. And so they are a minority-owned business who has experience with similar projects, including Orange Coast College and LACC and Cal State Long Beach. Next slide, please. So some of the elements of the study, as just kind of a quick reminder, there was, the study will include demographic analysis, stakeholder engagement, off-campus rental housing analysis, student housing trend analysis, student focus groups and surveys, site analysis, financial model development, as well as recommendations and plan. Next slide. And then just kind of in conclusion, before I kind of wrap this up, I really want to acknowledge the amazing team that we have that are really leading the efforts for basic needs on our campus. They, I have Dr. Lisa Kirkwood, as well as Deborah Miller Calvert, they are dialed in as well. So if the board has any specific questions, we can always introduce them and allow them to respond. But again, just a huge acknowledgement to this team, to Dr. Kirkwood, to Deb Miller Calvert, our Director of Student Health and Student Life. We are in the process of hiring a Basic Needs Program Manager. We've had Di, who's been serving as the LTE, and has really provided a lot of amazing support in that area. We hope to have someone identified relatively soon. As well as we have Karina Rubio, our Outreach and Recruitment Specialist, really providing support to our next of students and basic needs students at the PCC, our Pacific Coast Campus. And so that concludes my presentation, and I can take any questions. And just before I get started, I have to apologize, my internet, for whatever reason, went down. So I'm using my cellphone. So it looks very different than how it did when I was initially using it. I can't see myself, so I'm here holding a phone up, and I'm hoping I'm in the view. So forgive me for any of the technical issues at the beginning, but thankfully, I was able to just download that Zoom app and I adapted as quickly as I could.
No, you did a great job. Thank you, Dr. Munoz. Dr. Baxter?
Yes, I wanted to say thank you, Dr. Munoz, for your excellent presentation and for including our associate group in your presentation. It's a labor of love. I'm glad you included all the names, because we have a number of faculty and staff who are on the committee, working hard as volunteers to help our students. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baxter.
Trustee Zia?
Thank you, Mike. I too want to echo trustee Baxter's remarks, but I do want to ask you a couple of questions regarding your presentation. So if you go on to slide, I believe it was three? I'm sorry, four. Slide four. Page number four. Okay, so can you please speak to the distinction between homelessness? First of all, how is, who's defining these terminologies provided here, the vernacular that you're using, homelessness versus housing insecurity?
Sure.
And what distinction between the two? And I have more questions and comments.
Okay. So I think first, to kind of just clarify, this is based on a study that was conducted. So if you look at the resource, and I apologize, I have to really kind of lean into my phone to be able to see this. The California Community Colleges Real College Survey Report that was dated back in March 19th, or March 2019, as well as the survey on food and housing insecurity from LACC results back in fall of 2016. So those were the two primary sources for this. What we do know is LACC did one of the largest, at least in California, one of the largest California community college studies on food and housing insecurity. So in terms of the methodology and the operationalization definitions of each of those terms, my, I'll speak from my understanding, but I can research it in detail and provide you with that, because we can very easily provide you the full document. But essentially, students that are dealing with homelessness, one is homelessness is persistent and ongoing, whereas housing insecurity could be students who might have intermittent periods of homelessness. And so that's somewhat of the distinction between the two terms, is really kind of how persistent the homelessness is. But like I said, I would feel more comfortable if I could provide you with the document from that study, that way. And I'll give you the study, but I'll also provide you with a brief, let's just say, an abstract, so that way you don't have to read all 78 pages or whatnot. But really, that's kind of what we're talking about in terms of the distinctions between the two.
Okay, yeah, I see your source is Real College Survey, and that's led by Dr. Sarah Goldrick Rab, that, you know, she was the first one who broke the issue of homelessness. And it was based on her article in the New York Times that I caught on to the point and started investigating our college. And together with trustee Baxter, we founded the homeless student associate group with the foundation. So I'm glad you also acknowledged our efforts and their great work. On your page seven, just to, I think it's page seven, hold on one second. I lost my, okay. List of donors. You're mentioning, it's hard for me to navigate the two. Where, you have about 150, the reporting on how much we've received.
On page, and I apologize, I'm, give me one second here. I don't want to lose my, I just lost my view, I apologize.
That's okay. I just wanted to clarify, well, first of all, I'm glad that, I mean, I've been, trustee Baxter and I are like walking, talking advertisement for our stupid, this issue. It's just a dire situation, but where you report on who's been giving different, I don't know, the presentation I have, I guess it's not showing up, but it shows Persian New Year, right there, right? Page nine. So just to be clear, yeah, this is not what is on the agenda, by the way. The presentation must have been updated. What we have is inconsistent with what you're showing. But regardless, I just want to thank you for posting this. I'm glad that the Southwest Carpenters, for the second year, provided and increased their boxes of food. I was actually there on their weekend when they were packing it, which was really heartwarming. But just for a point of clarification for the public and my board members, the Persian New Year is not an organization. It's, it's in the honor of Persian New Year that one of my friends, Dr. Nushin Balizadeh, packed 150 bags of food and toiletry. Be clear, that's, and then the Iranian Persian American Association of Long Beach, that council member, Susie Price, and I founded, they're also raising money to provide to us. So last year, they gave, I believe it was $4,000, or $4,000, or $5,000. This year, they're trying to come up with numbers akin to that. So can also ensure that they're recognized, but I really appreciate you doing this. And then lastly, here you do, talking about the communication and how students, because this has been an issue, fundamental issue for me personally, is like, how are students finding out about our efforts, the great work that you guys are doing, the fundraising, and what's available? So I like that you've made updates there, but Chair Malauulu has had great input in the past as far as texting students. And I brought this up, because, you know, a lot of students may not have access to their email and finding out through a text. So when Vivian brought that up earlier, I think she's brought it up a couple of times or a few times, and I thought it was a great suggestion. Have we incorporated any kind of text notification for students?
Yes. So in the COVID-19 update, one of the strategies we did to notify students about our grab and go pre-bag grocery handouts that we did yesterday, giveaways that we did yesterday, we sent text messages to some of our targeted groups of students. So we identified our disproportionately impacted students, and our students that we know tend to be our most vulnerable students. We sent those students a text message notifying them that they could come on campus and pick up the bag of groceries. And so that is a strategy that we will continue to do, even when COVID crisis ends, we will continue to send text messages to students. So I heard that loud and clear, and I know that that was a suggestion that you gave me as well. So I wanted to make sure that as we're thinking about our communication strategies, we're building in the text messages as well. So, yeah.
So that hasn't been implemented yet for our students who are facing homelessness?
No, it has. So we have, so for the COVID response, we did implement the text messages. So as far as, I don't want to speak, I can let, I might have Deb speaking, because I don't want to misspeak and say that it has gone out before. I know that it went out yesterday.
Yes, Dr. Munoz. Deb can interject, because we did start this as of March 2nd, and it'll be a monthly text message that goes out notifying, notifying, notifying students of the Viking Vaults.
That's fantastic. I'm really excited. That's awesome, because that's how students get informed usually. And I just want to make it, I appreciate you categorizing the different ways folks can help, and I want to encourage my colleagues, you know, you may not want to give in a monetary sense, but clothing, food, unperishable items, or just, you know, packs, like Dr. Balizadeh has prepared the 150 bags. You don't necessarily have to put as much together, but I think this will be a great project for the Board of Trustees to collaborate on and support trustee Baxter and I and our efforts. And that's all I have. Thank you so much for a great presentation.
Thank you, trustee Zia.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to address Dr. Munoz on his presentation? I can't see you waving, and I can't hear you waving, so, there you go. Dr. Munoz, I see you waving. Okay, so I just want to also say thank you. That is a very comprehensive presentation, and I really appreciate the amount of information that you provided. I know that in the last couple of days, I've seen some photographs of Derek Ory and Taylor Robertson, even really diligent about, and a team, it's not just the two of them, but there are others. I know Camille was there, Bill Bolton was there, but there's just a whole of campus, just, you know, the staff is just amazing to be able to get that much food organized. I was on the Pacific Coast Campus a couple of weeks ago, was able to poke my head in, and the transformation of the vault, the pantry there is really incredible in just a very short amount of time. So thank you for doing that. It is unfortunate that COVID has sent everybody home, but the fact that it's there, and I love the drive-through that you all put together this week, I think you should be commended for that. So thank you, thank you. And on behalf of our students' families, because a lot of families, they are in positions, especially right now, where they're not able to help, so it's very important that they can rely on Long Beach City. so it's very important that um, they can rely on Long Beach City College to be able to do that. So I, I thank you, and I, I believe that that is a sentiment shared by the majority of our community.
Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else before we move on to the next presentation? All right, thank you, Dr. Munoz. On to uh, section, uh, item four point two on the agenda, this is the COVID nineteen update. Um, I will defer this to interim Superintendent President, um, and have her defer to her team. I just, I, I would, before we, we do that, I would just really like to let the public know um, how hard the administration has worked to get um, just, you know, to try, it was uh, exactly what um, LBCC FA President Diana stated, where she said um, how many classes had to be transferred over. In order for any of that to happen, the college really needed to take action, and we did have a special meeting um, a couple of weeks ago on a Saturday night, where the Board made the decision to declare um, an emergency, so that the administrators could make the, the very difficult decisions that needed to be made, and it was all regarding COVID. Um, I personally want to acknowledge the great work that Dr. Kathy Scott did um, in the time period before we actually appointed um, Ms. Bynum to become our interim Superintendent President. Dr. Scott really led the entire COVID nineteen initiative, and she was able to get uh, our other Vice Presidents, Marlene Drinkwine, Jean Duran, Mike Munoz, to get everybody and their respective departments to really work together. So it's just been an amazing, you know, the, the entire process really, if somebody wants to do a case study on how to take an entire college district and put it on emergency status, they really need to look at the work that was done at LBCC. And Dr. Scott, at my screen is uh, let me see if I could see you there, I like, I like to look at the, you know, there. I just want to let you know that uh, I think on behalf of the entire campus community, we really appreciate your leadership. And for everybody to know, Dr. Scott has been talking about COVID nineteen since January, it's been on her radar that long. Um, she spoke to me about it back then, um, because of her, I was actually able to mobilize myself at work. So I'd like to personally thank you as well. So with that, um, interim Superintendent President, Dr. Bynum, or Ms. Bynum?
Yeah, thank you very much, President Malauulu, and thank you so much for recognizing the work that Dr. Scott did and the executive team, uh, working with faculty and staff. I have to tell you, when I arrived on March sixteen, they were flying already. And I've heard from a number of um, presidents and other folks in the network that um, they're just starting to ask the kinds of questions that were being asked three, four weeks ago here at the college, and wondering how we're getting things done, and so um, I think that should make us all proud. But um, next slide, slide please. Um, this is the agenda, we're going to go through the timeline very quickly, we're going to talk a little bit about the Response Team. And then I'm going to turn it over to the VPs and have them go through their areas and give you the critical components of, of decisions that we've made and what we're doing to ensure that we support the students and the faculty and staff as much as possible while we're making these, these really transitional changes. Next slide, please. This is the timeline, we are at Wednesday, March twenty-fifth. Um, enormous amount of work has been done to do this. Um, one of the things, if you'll note down there, we'll talk a little bit more about this, the decision about commencement cer- ceremony has not been definitely made at this time. Um, we may um, have to postpone it, maybe schedule it, it just depends on where we are when we get in May and towards the end of the semester, but these are the expected dates of return, everything being um, as it is. And then um, noticing down there that our child development centers are closed till further notice. Next slide, please. Um, the COVID Response Team, as I mentioned, um, they started meeting in March ninth. I showed up March sixteenth. They had done such an enormous amount of work to organize themselves into subgroups that were working on various kinds of things. There's a COVID Response Team that has been meeting every day since that time began. But um, we are informed by external agencies, these are some of them, the City of Long Beach, also the Long Beach Public Health Department is um, a partner with us, and we communicate frequently with them. But um, there's very timely and frequent communications, we'll talk a little bit more about that in, in a moment. But um, everybody has been incredibly nimble, flexible, responsive, collaborative. You know, I worked here and retired three years ago, and um, I've come back to a campus that I think has changed in terms of the way that there's teamwork going on, and in terms of their leadership that's here, so I really appreciate that. There's a five-level plan that the college put into place, depending on what the circumstances and situations were, but uh, we'll talk a little bit more about that. And of course, patience and kindness is first and foremost, I think, with everyone. Next slide, please. Uh, the Response Team, there's, this information right here has been impressive and enormous. And I've asked Joshua Castellanos, who is our Executive Director in our Communications Area, to just give you a little bit of an update about some of the stats involving this, and I think you'll be pleasantly surprised. Josh?
Got it. Good evening, President Malauulu, trustees, and thank you Superintendent Bynum. Um, you know, there was a word that we used today while we were talking that was, uh, this has been impressive, that what we've been able to put together. Um, the communication plan, we kind of threw everything at this, and it's been thoughtful, it's been timely, and it's been really targeted, I mean, even when we started looking at the website, you know, how, how does someone interact with the website today? So what we knew is that there was going to be a lot of information coming, so we kind of developed a feed, a news feed, that was very similar to what you would see in social media today. So we built that, plus we had uh, three other sections which were targeted to staff, faculty, and the students. And we use that same kind of process as we started communicating with, with everybody, uh, with, same thing with the emails. You know, there was targeted emails to students, faculty, staff. We sent text messages that were exactly the same, uh, we did uh, robocalls, mass phone calls, uh, social media posts, even boosted, and everything really led back to the website. So any kind of communication that went out was posted on the website and put on that feed. Uh, we used the marquees, the TV screens, we posted flyers on, you know, the front of every door as we could. There was a branding that we tried to use, so that, you know, you knew what you're looking for quickly if it was COVID. In fact, when we sent the emails out, we created a COVID uh, domain for that, or a, a, a email to, to send to people. We, we shared information with our, our local uh, news media, with Cal State University, um, with uh, Long Beach Unified. And it was just really impressive, and just a few numbers, and we pulled a few numbers, um, and I think you guys are going to appreciate this, in, in just a short amount of time, we created nearly fifty webpages just for COVID. And uh, we had multiple some analytics, and this website has, just COVID, has over a hundred thousand unique page views. That's really, really impressive in such a short amount of time. We boosted posts, we've sent all the robocalls, and Luann said, you know, well, how many messages? I mean, how many, how many people did we reach? And we, we kind of just put a, 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 some adding these numbers together, and it was nearly three-quarters of a million messages that were delivered. There was four text messages, there was four robocalls, all the social media posts and the emails. It's just really impressive in such a short amount of time, and I, I couldn't be any more proud of the team. Uh, and it's not just my team, it was the, the COVID Response Team. Uh, Superintendent President Bynum has come in, she's given directions, she's uh, been kind, she's been understanding, and um, the Board for, also for uh, supporting us, so uh, there's, it's been a short time, but a lot has happened, and uh, really proud of, of the, of the work that we put in. So that, that, that does it for, for the communications.
Well, thank you, uh, thank you, um, Josh, I, I'm just really pleased that we're doing such a great wide net and our constant communications, because that's critically important. Um, next slide, please. Um, the Instruction Team um, has, um, well, I'll let Kathy do this part, and Kathy can maybe give you a little bit more of an organizational structure for the Instruction Team, so Dr. Scott?
Um, yes, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, all right, um, first of all, uh, thank you very much, um, poor President Malauulu, for your very kind comments. Um, that was very meaningful to me, and I appreciate it very much. Um, I'm being given credit by a lot of people, and I thank you, but I do need to say very clearly that um, during this time, the four Vice Presidents really stood together and were a team, working with Josh and Stacy to make sure that this entire effort was coordinated and collaborative. And we, we worked together as a team, we met together, the four VPs with the entire Management Association as a team, we met with the faculty leadership as a team, and we, we approached the entire thing in that manner, and I think that's largely why it has been as, as successful as it has been. Um, I'd also really like to just take a second to uh, thank Karen Roberts for her comments, those, that was very nice of her also, and um, the leadership of the Faculty Association, Diana Okamachi, and the, and the Academic Senate, Jerry Florence, I mean, everybody has worked together, it has been very, very, uh, just, it has just been an amazing effort, and I'm, I, I just can't believe how well people at this college work together, so I'm grateful for that, and I need to say that. Um, we did create, um, as President Bynum said, um, these different groups, and um, the Instruction Team included numerous faculty that I just need to name briefly, because they're, they're, they've worked tirelessly to create things to help other faculty. Jerry Florence, Wendy Koenig, uh, Sumin Mandanari, Michael Robertson, Michael Neal, Melvin Cobb, Kirsten Moreno, and Laurene Baker, they were really critical in helping with us, along with numerous administrators. And I have to say that when Superintendent Bynum came in and met with President's Leadership Council, I think on her first morning, um, that was just a seamless transition, and uh, she stepped in very gracefully, and it's, it's been, it's been amazing, so um, anyways, I just needed to note that as well. Um, okay, when we um, when we learned that we were going to have to go make this transition to temporary remote instruction, we immediately began communicating with the faculty. And at that time, about thirty-three percent of the faculty did not have Canvas shells. So it was a huge lift for um, Husam and Sylvia and their team, um, the faculty, the department heads, um, the deans, um, just creating those shells and ensuring that faculty knew how to set up a Canvas page and how to set up confer Zoom, so they could at least function and communicate with their students. That was our first goal, and people jumped on it, and they did a great, great job. Um, I have to also um, thank uh, Husam and Sylvia again. I mean, I was communicating with them the minute we knew that this was going to happen, they were off-site at a conference, and we were, we were on the phone an entire weekend. Um, but Husam and his team has, has delivered thirteen hundred training sessions for, for faculty. They were either face-to-face, online, or live remote. Um, and that's duplicated, that's, some faculty did many of them, but thirteen hundred training sessions in a two-week period is massive. Um, and I wanted to, um, if Dario could help me, please, uh, show the class list. And Diana, your numbers were pretty close, we've had a few changes since uh, today. Um, at this point, two thousand and twelve sections or classes have transitioned to remote instruction that had been face-to-face, so two thousand and twelve. Seventy-six are in a suspended state currently. Um, we were on a phone call with the Chancellor's Office this morning, and they um, told us that um, they've, they're talking about possibly allowing us to extend the spring term, to bring back some of those classes where, where students really have to do face-to-face work. Um, but this is the class list, that students can see what's happening with their, with their individual class, but you can see transition to remote almost all the way through, two thousand and twelve courses, classes. Um, eight classes, um, we're still working on trying to get those remote, um, and we're in, in discussions with the faculty, faculty in that area. Um, but it's just been a Herculean effort, and I have to, to say that. In a few areas, I'd just like to focus on just briefly, um, if you look at um, even like anatomy here, um, and overseeing by um, Moises Gutierrez, the dean, um, they couldn't take anything home, because they have hazardous materials. So they came into the labs with their colleagues, um, perform, actually performed the labs, recorded them, photographed them, and that's what they're using for instruction. So they also, when in his area, had faculty adopt other faculty to help them get to the point where they could teach these classes online very quickly, or remote very quickly. Um, each course in the sciences developed a lead who created the course and helped everybody else through it. Um, other people investigated YouTube, Khan Academy, and anything else that they could do. Um, if we just keep going on, auto and the trades, I mean, here we just had the trades are back, and now we're dealing with this. Um, but um, auto, some of the faculty were allowed to take the electric vehicles home, so they could do videos of, of, of different operations on the car. Um, culinary has created cooking videos, um, putting together ingredient bags for students to pick up to continue their assignments. Chef Haley has been fabulous. Um, the electrical area and the entire trades under Scott Fraser's leadership has been amazing. Um, they're using simulation software where they can to allow students to continue to work. And most of the courses that are in that suspended stage, those are the ones where we want to give credit to students for what they've done, but we also need for them to come back and do some more hands-on work. Some of it's a safety issue, we don't want students to go out there in the world and, and hurt themselves in any manner, because they really have to have that hands-on training. Um, Dr. Orr's classes, and they're all throughout here, uh, Social Sciences and Arts. I mean, Social Sciences is a big lift, you get all those classes up, but the Performing Arts and Studio Arts had, had really unique challenges. And they've been connecting with colleagues throughout the country to innovate and continue teaching through the end of the semester, and they have committed to continue the end, um, as, in these extraordinarily creative ways, which of course the arts can do. And um, I also wanted to, the nursing classes are up here, and I know that uh, Dario's scrolling through, and I'm kind of all over the place, but um, the nursing classes, they, that was very, very hard, because they tried to stay in those clinical sites until the last minute. And then finally, and, and I was worried about them being in there, and then finally, they were, they were removed by the clinical sites. Um, but um, the, the whole situation with nursing is very interesting right now, because we're being asked really to continue that instruction, and possibly even have some classes back on campus in a social distancing manner, because the need for nurses is so great right now. Um, the governor's, the governor is also working with the BRN to try to change some of the requirements, uh, which, it's been seventy-five percent of the clinicals are supposed to be with patients, but they're looking at um, allowing more sim demonstrate, sim, sim lab. They're also looking at some really unique things with, um, I'm just trying to find my notes, um, uh, where you're calling in and doing triage over the phone, so they're looking at really unique ways to help with that. And also, the NCLEX testing, which had been shut down, they're trying to bring that back, um, so that our students can uh, go ahead and finish, and then go out there and, out there in the world and help the way so many other um, medical professionals are doing right now. So, and then also in Paul's area, the, the yoga, kinesiology, all that is continuing in a very creative and effective manner. Um, so I just wanted to mention that, okay, maybe we can leave the, the list, I think you get the impression. Thanks, Dario. Okay, um, all right, and I also wanted to just look briefly at the, the sheet for fa- the website for faculty that um, Josh was talking about. And if you could click on the, the first one here, the Remote Online Teaching, I wanted you to see what uh, Husam and his area has done, um, working in collaboration with faculty, um, FPD, Faculty Professional Development, the Senate, um, various people have been involved, but you can see all these different, we've got about twelve different slide, different tiles here. If you just click on one, just the first one, I don't want to take too much time, but just click on this first one, you can see all the resources here for faculty, and just scroll down a little bit, um, all these keep-teaching checklists, I will survive coronavirus, um, all these suggestions for creativity, flexibility, and if you could go back, but you can see all this work that's gone into creating this, this website. And if, I'm, I'm not going to go into each one of these just for the essence of time, but all the Canvas training, how to do Zoom, our faculty created um, videos for how to teach other faculty how to use confer Zoom in class. Um, we've got pedagogy, we're trying to deal, make sure that we do not lose sight of equity issues, uh, communication with students, making sure that we're doing everything we can to communicate with our students who we know are struggling right now. Assessment strategies, how to, how to design low-stakes quizzes to give students some confidence that they're going to be okay in this, in this modality. And then also finally, the faculty support services, all the numbers, phone numbers, websites, everything that faculty need to get support, to help themselves and their students. And then back on the very last one is our online teaching certification, which we're hoping more and more faculty will continue to go through. Karen Roberts mentioned that in her report. We have been encouraging faculty for a long time to get their certifications and now they're really going to need to do it. So, okay, if you could go back to the presentation, Dario, thank you. Okay. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Lee Douglas for all of his work in getting tutoring completely online. We have student tutors working remotely. The library has all of its services online, chat with a librarian, online research orientations, and we also have our online databases. So all of the library services continue. We've been, we try to be very careful about ensuring academic integrity. According to Title V, we have to have a certain number of instructional hours before we give credit. We need to make sure that our students are continuing to be able to transfer their classes appropriately. Credit cannot be earned if we don't have a certain number of instructional hours. And we also need to be mindful that, you know, our SLOs have to be met, our objectives have to be met. And students need the background in order to, they're prerequisite, they need that background in order to go on to the next level. So we're trying to be mindful of all those things as well. And finally, the status for summer. And actually, before I say that, I needed to say another thing. The academic services staff, under the leadership of Michelle Grimes-Hillman and Brent Gilmore, you have no idea what they've gone through trying to create that class list. Going all the different changes, all the different information from the Chancellor's Office and constantly revising it. I mean, it just went up prior again to the board meeting. So it has been modified at least 10 times. You know, also as faculty are trying to decide what they can do and what they can't do. But they've done a really good job, so thank you. And also, just in terms of areas in my area, Melissa has continued, Melissa Intefasino and her group has continued to do resume workshops, helping students to get ready for interviews. All of that, working one-on-one with students, having workshops, all of that continues online in a very unique way. So thank you to her and her team also. Okay, finally, status for summer. We believe that it's highly likely that we will be fully online for summer. We are hoping that we can bring back some of those classes, like the trades, to do, to finish in what would have been the beginning of the summer session. We are, you know, we're just going to have to wait. We don't know what's going to happen here with the health situation in the state. We're just going to have to wait and see. But it is our, it is our hope that we're going to be able to come back and help every student complete their class. And thank you very much. At this point, I will turn it over to Dr. Munoz to look at Student Services.
Great, thank you, Dr. Scott. So I'm going to provide you a brief update on our COVID response within Student Services. So some of the things I'm going to walk you through is our information site for students, talk a little bit about the helpline and phone tree that we developed, speak a little bit about our transition to remote counseling, and then drilling down to speak specifically around our case management strategies. And then we'll conclude with continuing our supports for basic needs for our students during this time. So if we can click on the COVID-19 Information for Student website, I'm going to kind of walk you through this approach. I want to, like Dr. Scott did as well, I want to acknowledge the amazing team in Student Services. It took a lot of effort to transition and get prepared to move remotely and move Student Services to an online format. So I want to acknowledge Dr. Noel Corral, Dr. Alicia Kirkwood, Ivan Gutierrez, Sonia De La Torre, Ramon Knox, as well as Maria Echoel and Dr. Tara Hardy Teodoro. They were essentially the Student Services Subcommittee for our COVID response. And so one of the things that we decided to do early on was identify what were the essential services that we needed to continue to provide in a time of remote transition. And so we really wanted to crystallize that and then think about the student experience. So we really situated ourselves in the student experience and what that would be like to navigate these essential services remotely. So I'm going to ask Dario to scroll down just a little bit so you can see the tiles. We created a tile format, so I was able to work with Stacy and Stacy stayed late one night and we were here pretty late and we were brainstorming and saying, you know what? All the information that's coming out from the college, very long, lengthy emails, a lot of legalese information, students aren't really going to understand this. And so we decided to create these buckets. So you could see, we created a bucket for communications and information around remote instruction and transitioning to remote instruction and online. Prevention tips, travel advisories, and then at the very bottom, coronavirus resources. Quick kind of funny story with travel advisory. Probably about a week ago, before we went fully remote, I picked up my phone, calling, there was a mother on the line and she said, "Dr. Munoz, can you speak to my son and tell him not to go to, he can't go to Cancun for spring break?" And I kind of like chuckled and laughed because I was like, "Well, I don't think I can tell him he can't go, but I have this great website that talks about a travel advisory." And so we actually provided the travel advisory to this mother and she used that as a basis to talk with her son about his spring break trip. But if we scroll back up to the top where I really want to focus our energy on and time is on the remote online Student Services. So if we can click on that, Dario. And what you can see here is we have a micro website for Student Services. So instead of students being directed to the general campus websites and the websites and webpages for A&R and Financial Aid, Counseling, et cetera, we decided to host this micro site that really helps students understand what they need to know right now during this time of remote and online Student Services. So if we click on admissions and records, you'll see in admissions and records, we let everyone know that we expect to be back on June 8th. But these are the high-level kinds of services that many students still need to be able to access during this time. So you could see information about submitting a form. So if we click on submitting a form, you can see here, it tells them how they can submit documents, ordering transcripts. If we can click on that and expand that, you'll see how students can access that. If we scroll back up, and I'm going to move my window pane to the side, you can see to the right, the contact information for A&R is listed so they can send a direct email as well as call the office line. We are, through Skype for Business, we've been able to forward calls to employees. And so if there is someone who will answer that phone line during the stated hours of operation, which are 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM while we're working remotely. If we come back out of that, Dario, and now click on Financial Aid. So again, for Financial Aid, you can see again, really distilling the information that students need to know during this time of remote Student Services. So information about how they can verify their FAFSA, submitting SAPA pills, submitting income reductions, as well as if we scroll down, all that information is there and it's at the fingertips of our students as well as, again, being very consistent in the look and feel to the right, the phone number for Financial Aid as well as being able to send an email. So again, we're being very conscious about being able to really meet students' needs during this time. If we can back out of that as well. And now let's look at Counseling Services. So this was a very heavy lift to move our Counseling Services to a remote function. And so I want to acknowledge some key individuals in this. I want to acknowledge Javier Villasenor, who really took a strong leadership role along with our department chairs, Dr. Arania Freeman, as well as Lorraine Bluen. I want to also acknowledge some of our counselors who've been historically doing the online counseling but had to really kind of help their colleagues scale this model up. So that would be Judy O., Kathy Fernandez, Ralph Mesa, Lisa Lyken. So again, thank you to all of them in moving us to this online remote format. If we scroll down a little bit, you can see how students can click on making an online counseling appointment. So if we can click on that for a moment. Again, we're anchoring ourselves in the student experience and thinking about the student experience. The very first option a student can click on is general counseling. But one of the things we identified during this time is we want a case management, we want a case management approach to this. We really want to be able to support our students through the concept of student success teams. So as you can see, we have athletics, Cow Works, Destino, Dreamers, Guardian Scholars, EOPS, Honors, international students. Next up, Puente. We essentially veterans, Umosia, Trio, first-year experience, DSPS, all of our students that we really think should be case managed. We've taken those cohort lists and broken them out by counselors and now counselors are able to really drill down and support those students. So again, not just thinking about our universal services, but a two-pronged approach. One, where we're providing general counseling services to any student who needs it during this time of remote instruction, but also really case managing our students who we really need to pay attention to and we want to prevent any type of, any outcome where our students are leaving us because they're not able to be successful during this time of remote instruction. And if we can back out of counseling. Dario, thank you again. One more click. And let's scroll down to the bottom. You can see some of the other services that are there. You'll see Disabled Student Services, the Health Center, EOPS Care. And next up, let's continue to scroll down. First-year entry services, basic needs, international students and veterans. But we're going to click on basic needs. And so I'm very proud to share with the board and the campus community that we are continuing to provide support to our students through the Viking Vault. And Dario, do you mind pulling up that slide with the photos from yesterday's grocery bag distribution? Thank you. So I just wanted to share some, a couple images. So we were able to provide over 300 grocery bags yesterday to students both at LAC and PCC. And these bags were very robust, as you can see the photo in the middle. Each bag came with a box of cereal, almond milk, bread, pita, peanut butter and jollies, string cheese, tuna fish. And there was a lot more other nutritional items that were in there that are kind of not at the tip of my tongue. But it was a, it's definitely a bag, a very robust bag that could get a student through a week. And so our goal is to continue to offer this service on a weekly basis, as well as we're recognizing that we don't fully know what the future has in store for us, right? In terms of, you know, if coronavirus spikes and we really need to not have students come on campus, we've been able to secure, we're in the process of securing gift cards to Albertsons and Vons as well as Walmart. Walmart provides an electronic gift card, so we will be able to email a gift, electronic gift card so that some of our most in need and vulnerable students would be able to still get groceries during this time as well as we'll have some gift cards to Vons and Albertsons as well. And so just kind of closing this section out, Dario, if you can pull up the other PDF that I had sent you about the foundation. So we've been really also partnering with the foundation. I've had a couple conversations with Paul Kaminski about ways that we can connect and support. And so Paul, and through the foundation, sent this email out to the greater Long Beach community of how they can support our students during this time. We know in Long Beach, we have a very philanthropic community, a community that cares deeply about our students. And so we're encouraging folks, because we've had folks contact us and say, "How can we help? How can we help our Viking students?" We're encouraging and directing folks to go to the website to make a gift during this time that then can provide some emergency aid and support for our students who are most in need right now in terms of dealing with the coronavirus crisis. So that's my report.
Okay. Superintendent President Bynum, is there anybody else that will weigh in on the COVID-19 presentation?
If I may, poor President Malauulu, we're just getting the presentation backed up and running and I think I have my turn next.
All right.
I wanted to share some of the activities that have happened in the administrative and business services area. And you've heard it said several times that this was truly a collaborative team approach across functions, across areas of expertise, all with the single shared goal to continue to serve our students and keep faculty, staff and students safe. One of the most essential things we did was to develop that district essential personnel list. It was a multi-step process. It was done by functional departments where they first identified what were their important processes. And then could they have those moved remotely? Could they be performed remotely? And then those that they could not perform remotely, they needed to meet a test. Were these critical? Did they have to continue to be performed? If so, what's the minimum number of people necessary to be on campus to perform it for the minimum number of time? It really boiled down to, do we really need to do it? Do we need to do it onsite? And who really has to do it? Once we went through that process, we were able to determine who are our essential personnel. And I want to mention here that, under the direction of Superintendent President Bynum, that includes at least one member of the executive leadership team who will be onsite at LAC Monday through Friday to provide that onsite leadership. Our special project director, Erin Murphy, is coordinating our essential personnel list. On a weekly basis, we provide it to Lieutenant Martinez, Facilities, the leadership team, because we are really tracking all of these folks. If you are essential personnel, you are provided with the letter stating so so that you have some formal recognition. And other than essential personnel, both campuses are close to all faculty, staff, student and the public. So it was really a critical component of keeping our campuses safe. And speaking of keeping our campuses safe, campus security, of course, is one of our intense focuses during this time period because we do have less personnel on campus. I should also mention that under this crisis, the Long Beach Police Department has redeployed some of our officers, so we have less officers present. But we still have enough to keep us safe. We locked down these buildings for a couple of reasons and that's to ensure that we don't have people onsite who shouldn't be there and that we have a very secured environment. And with this approach, we've really been able to maintain a safe and secure campus. And I really want to say thanks to Lieutenant Martinez, who's been able to provide us with a lot of information. He participates in that COVID-19 response team and gives us a daily update on what's happening with the situation from a city perspective. We are taking this opportunity to provide a deep cleaning and sanitization of each and every building while they're largely unoccupied. Our senior director of facilities, Walter Johnson, our operations manager, Cheryl Williams, have established those sanitation rooms that will go to building to building to building during this time period to do that deep cleaning so that when we get through this crisis, people can feel safe and secure in returning to their workspace, students, faculty, staff alike. I want to reassure you that all crews are provided with personal protection equipment, PP&amp;E, gloves, masks, the proper equipment so that they are safe while performing these duties. That same equipment is provided to any other unit on campus that has contact. I think you may have noticed in the photograph that Dr. Munoz shared, that there was a person equipped with a mask and a glove. We make sure that that is provided to all essential personnel as necessary. And let's talk a little bit about events. Our campuses are fantastic locations for the community to have events, not just Long Beach City College. Unfortunately, all events on campus have been canceled through June 30th, 2020. This includes district events as well as those events held by external organizations. And I really want to thank Sean Rubell, who's been a leader in this area, really connecting with all those organizations and really providing some clarity to a process that otherwise could have been very confusing. Unfortunately, we are losing a significant amount of revenue from the cancellation of these events. We're looking so far through June 30th, almost $450,000 in lost revenues. Some of the major events that have not been able to be held are the Antique Swap Meet, the Toppings Auto Show, as well as the XFL LE Wildcats Practice. Once we are past this crisis, we are looking at prioritization of our facilities for first-hour students, our contractually obligated events, and then looking at our partners at Long Beach Unified, who do use our facilities for their commencement who do use our facilities for their commencement and promotion exercises at the end of the year. So we really want to make sure that when we are open again, we do it in a really methodical way that recognizes those long-term partnerships. And really, the core of what my team has been doing is looking at our business processes and performing those remotely. We had a high-level business continuity plan. This crisis forced us to look at it in a very deep, deep, really in-the-weeds approach. And we revisited and refined that plan. And I want to mention our fantastic directors, our Fiscal Services Director, John Thompson, Business Support Services, Bob Repose, and our Chief Information Technology Officer, Sylvia Lynch, who have really put in a tremendous amount of time, effort, thought in moving our processes to an online or remote environment. We've done a great job at the Health and Support Communications to communicate how these changes affect what the rest of the campus needs to do. We've eliminated a ton of wet signatures and have now had a process where we can do that electronically. And I think we've made some great strides. Unfortunately, not everything we do can be performed remotely. Consider, for instance, the issuance of payroll checks for those who don't have direct deposit. So there are instances where we do have to have staff come onsite, be that essential personnel, and do those functions. But we are having them onsite for the least amount of time possible. We do expect to continually refine those processes. We're looking at purchasing of software that will help us provide better support. And I think as we go through this, we're going to become leaner and more efficient in the end. And I really want to mention our help desks. We specify on the slide, "Student technology." But our IITS team has established help desks for students, staff, faculty. We really are supporting how everybody performs their function during this crisis. I want to say that IT has created a lot of different processes to support issued equipment, repair, troubleshooting needs. And a couple of numbers, we redirected almost 150 laptops to faculty and staff to support them working remotely. We're acquiring 250 Chromebooks to provide to students who still have those needs. We're expecting delivery at the end of this month of nearly 50 Wi-Fi hotspots. So we know that we need to continually provide the support, and we are really rising to the occasion. And then lastly, I want to mention our Small Business Development Center support. This is phenomenal, what they've been able to pull together to support the small businesses in our community. On our website, you'll be able to find the LA Small Business Development Center's COVID-19 Response Guide. That will walk you through how to go through these folks to get a small business loan that will help you take care of things like payroll, like debts, like accounts payable, loans up to $2 million with very low interest rates for our small business owners. They also are providing additional guidance, how to work with the Employment Development Departments, how to navigate this crisis, what are some best practices. So they really are leveraging their economic development placement in our community to really serve small business owners through this crisis. So at the end, hopefully, they can continue to be employers of our students. Lots of information, a very short amount of time, forgive me for the speed of my speech. But next, I'd like to turn it over to Jean Durmendt for a discussion on Human Resources.
Perfect. Thank you, Marlene. So first and foremost, for those who don't know me, one of my biggest motivators at work is to become a trusted resource. So having said that, I just want to express a great deal of appreciation and how much I'm humbled by the kind words that have been given today by our bargaining unit leaders and other leaders. It is only with that trust that we can accomplish everything that we do. Doesn't mean we don't sometimes disagree, but the focus of our conversations that I've had with the bargaining unit leaders has been to find solutions and to attack problems and to make sure that we are doing everything we can do to support our employees through this challenging time for all of us. So to that end, we did meet and confer with all the bargaining units. It was quick, it was pointed, it was to the point. So we do have MOUs in place with AFT, with FA, and also with CHI. And in particular with classified staff, I just want to share that as much as they can work remote, they are. For those staff members who may not be able to work remote, that there may not be an assignment for them, they're going to continue to get paid. So I just wanted to share that with everyone. I know that was a concern, that was expressed at the last board meeting. We are working very hard to continue support and protect the employment and benefits of those employees that we have on campus. In addition, the one thing that we did was essentially place all non-critical position hiring on hold. This was twofold. One of them was to protect my staff with contact. And we were transitioning and trying to understand how this health issue was going to unfold since then we've gotten more. We absolutely are open for business for critical positions. And fortunately, we have new guidance on the ability to complete an I-9 remotely, at least temporarily. In addition, like this meeting, the Personnel Commission meetings will continue. They're important to us. They do a great service to the district and our classified staff, so we'll be supporting them with remote meetings. And to my other point, yes, we are supporting employees. For those employees with benefits, we have an employee assistance program that provides, among various things, mental health resources, legal resources, elder care resources, among other things. There's a link on the HR website. We will also have a communication that Erin is working on regarding training resources. So for those employees who are working remote, it's a great time for them and for managers to get them updated with training, with process improvement, and everything else. So that's going out as much as possible. The other thing I just want to make sure is, as Karen said, Susan Salazar is important. She has supported me, she's my assistant, she's kept me sane, she's kept me organized, and I want to thank her as well, as well as Kristin Olson, our Associate VP of Human Resources, and Jennifer Ramos, our Executive Director of Classified Staff, and the entire HR team, who seamlessly, quickly, and without skipping a beat on the high level of service that we already provide, are working remotely, and the work is continuing to get done. HR is open, and we continue to support everyone, all the employees that we can. And on that, short and sweet, we're getting to the end. I will turn it over to our Superintendent President, Lan Bynum.
I speak quickly.
Yeah, thank you, Jean. I can't bring up my picture, but that doesn't matter. It's more important to talk about these next steps. I just hope everybody has got a good sense from this walkthrough of the exceptional work that this team has done in conjunction with our faculty and staff. It really is remarkable, and we're lucky to have them. And we will continue in this vein and make sure that we come out of the gate more so, hopefully, than any other college, and have the answers to help problem solve for the rest of our sister colleges. If you take a look at the next steps, these are the things that we still have to make some major decisions on. You know, what are we going to do about our commencement ceremony? Will we postpone it? Will we have a ceremony perhaps in the fall? Will we look at next year's ceremony and perhaps invite this year's graduates? We have to make some decisions about that. Summer instruction, the modality for summer instruction is still up in the air, but we're anticipating and will be ready for remote instruction if we have to continue that. Registration, we have changed some of our registration dates. And we need to communicate also with Long Beach Unified and see what situations they have and how we might be able to leverage with them, as well as other people in the community that are wanting to come to Long Beach City College. And of course, you heard about managing the budget impact and estimating what that will be. So these are all things that are coming up, in addition to myriad of other kinds of decisions attached to these things. But I just want to give you a heads up that we're not quite there yet with all of this, but we will be. And again, thank you so much to this amazing team. I'm so proud to be able to work with them. And again, it gives me great comfort that they know what they're doing, they're smart, they're at the ready, and I think we're in good hands with them as well. So with that, I will open it up to any questions that you may have.
Okay, there, I see Dr. Baxter's hand.
Yeah, I had unmute. One of the slides showed that the Long Beach City College phone number was 9384111. What I want to know is, do you have a human being answering that phone? This is kind of a joke, but it's not a joke.
No, it's a great question, Trustee Baxter. Mike?
Sure. So essentially, it operates more as a phone tree. So when you call one of that number, it gives you different options. And then, depending upon the option you select, it directs you to a live person.
Oh, okay. That is fine. But in years past, you dialed that number and it rang 20 times and no one answered. Okay, so that's perfect. Okay.
I was there for that.
All right, anybody else? I'm trying to maximize the screen so I could see if anyone can see any other hands up.
Trustee Malauulu.
There you go. Trustee Antuck.
Hey, can you hear me? Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the comprehensive update. It's a really important topic, and I think, you know, everyone's kind of world has shifted here in the last three weeks. And it's important, I think, for hopefully the public who are watching online and folks who have access to documents can see the tremendous effort that we went through on campus to adjust and shift to the global pandemic. And I know that the guidance has been shifting from preliminarily three weeks ago to today. I think the most recent guidance is the shelter-in-place order is probably going to be for 12 weeks. But the actual governor's order is for an indefinite period of time. It does not have a deadline. And I think we need to make sure that folks are aware that this is going to be a three-to-four-plus-month new normal of the shelter-in-place and remote working and remote tele-instruction. And I think there's going to be a lot of lessons learned from the spring semester that I hope we can adapt into summer and fall. And I think it's really been a time of ingenuity and thinking outside the box of, you know, taking electric vehicles home and to do YouTube videos off of it, really trying to use some of the online tools that are available to help, you know, bring people together, even though we're physically separated and can't get together in person. So, you know, I think we all recognize that this is an unprecedented situation that we're in. And it's, we know it's going to get worse before it gets better. But I think we also need to be eyes wide open that this is probably longer than the end of the month or the end of the semester that we're going to be in this shelter-in-place state. So I just wanted to say that, but I also wanted to thank all the vice presidents for their presentation and for, in terms of Superintendent Biden, for her leadership. And this is going to be, it's been difficult, and it's going to continue to be difficult. But I have the confidence that we're going to manage and make it through together. But it's just want to be realistic that this is going to be a long-term change here for several months to come. So thank you, President Malauulu.
Thank you, Trustee Antuck. Yes, Trustee Otto? You're on mute, Trustee Otto. There you go.
I will learn this system eventually. If it takes four months to get through this crisis, I might, by the end of it, begin to understand Zoom. But I want to reiterate what Trustee Antuck said, and that is that, yeah, I think that this is going to go on for quite some time. I am just dazzled by the leadership that our executive team has provided. Each and every one of them is just on fire about understanding this, developing solutions in areas that, you know, that really stretch them to understand the big picture of this. And I feel confident. I too especially want to acknowledge Kathy Scott, who really got out in front of this as we were making this transition and helped assemble the team and do the work. And I'm glad that Lan Bynum is now there to help provide leadership. Long Beach City College is a storied institution in this community, and that's because it has provided educational leadership for 90 years. And this is a new chapter. I think people are feeling comfortable with what it is that we're doing. And yet, every day is a new day. And if we continue to work together, like I'm seeing, we're working together and developing approaches to this issue and how to cope with it. I'm confident about the future. We just have to keep our shoulder to the wheel and make sure that we get it done. So thank you to everybody who is doing this work, the faculty, the administration, the classifieds, the adjunct faculty. I'm just very, very happy. That's it.
Okay. I don't see any other hands there. And that outstanding COVID-19 presentation really is a testament to the caliber of people that we have associated with Long Beach Community College District. You know, it starts at the top, and the fact that we are so student-centered and so focused on maintaining a continuity of services and maintaining the quality level of education that we are accustomed to providing for our community says a lot. And I agree with Trustee Otto, where he said that he was dazzled. I think that's a perfect word, because it's just really inspiring to have an administrative team and all of the other teams, all of the other moving parts that it takes to have made something like this happen in such a short amount of time. I know that other community colleges look to us for that type of leadership, and I'm very proud to, you know, just very proud to be a part of it, very proud of the work that's been done. Superintendent President, Ms. Bynum, you came in at an incredible time. Some might say that it wasn't good timing for you to join at this time. But I think, you know, for such a time as this, that there's a reason why you're here at this time. And for everybody else who's been just putting their head down and going to work for the last few weeks, just incredible job. I mean, you know, the website, the communications team had the website up almost overnight. There was a conversation about it, and the next day, there was a COVID-19 link on the website. And then students, and then emails, and every day, there were new pages and new layers added to it. There's nothing that anybody could have a want of in terms of seeking information and finding information. So I commend all of you. Thank you very much. And if there's, for there, 4.2, we are going to move on to Section 5. Section 5.1, Item 5.1 is a resolution recognizing Women's History Month. And this, you know, it's painful, because we are still in Women's History Month, but so many of the activities that we had planned had to be canceled because of COVID. And I know that there were activities on campus that were held the second March. And I was actually in a COVID meeting during one of those events. So I was in a, I know, Trustee Baxter, you attended one of those events, right? Yeah, we were supposed to be there together, and I was working on some COVID plans. So there is a resolution for the benefit of the public. It is attached to the agenda, it is a public attachment. And I invite everyone to read it, and it goes, you know, in vain of the other resolutions that the district has adopted throughout the course of the last couple of years, recognizing our different groups on campus and the work that we are doing to appreciate the diversity of our campus. And this being the 100th year of the Women's Suffrage Movement, we are especially proud, and we are going to go big in 2021. Let me tell you, the Women's History Celebration is going to make up for the centennial, and then it'll be for the 101th anniversary. So if anybody would like to chime in on that discussion, otherwise, we do have to. I see your hand, Trustee Baxter, go ahead.
Could I make a motion to approve the resolution for Women's, Recognizing Women's History Month?
Trustee Antuck, seconds.
All right, we have a motion by Trustee Baxter and a second by Trustee Antuck to adopt the Women's History Month resolution. Now, could somebody correct me if I'm wrong? But I do believe this is the first time that we've actually had a resolution recognizing Women's History Month. Is that correct?
I think so, but I'm not sure.
Well, Trustee Baxter, you're a resident historian, so you have to make that call. Yes, or?
I don't think when I was here...
I would say yes.
I think that's a yes also. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that item? All right. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, I do believe that that requires a roll call vote.
Yes. Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Udo Wapjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
And Student Trustee Jimenez?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 5.2 on the agenda is the California Community College CCT 2020 Board Election. And this also requires a roll call vote after the tally is complete. Trustee Otto, I see your hand.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to this before we go through the roll call vote on this, because I noticed that I think there's some inaccurate information in the list of candidates and their status, and I think that's important. And I won't belabor this. As you know, I've been involved at the state level for... And I won't belabor this, as you know, I've been involved at the state level for quite some time and I know almost everyone who is a candidate or is already on the board. And I'll go through them very quickly. I know we're going to all vote individually on these people, but Adrian Gray was the incoming president of the CCCT. Andrea Hoffman is kind of the representative from LA Community College District that we always like to have because of the biggest district in the state. Pam Haynes is from Los Rios, but she's also on the Board of Governors, and so she's been very, very active and very, very smart. Barbara Dunceath is a faculty member at East LA College and a trustee at North Orange. And I co-chaired the Commission on the Future of Community Colleges with her a while ago and was very impressed with her abilities. Marissa Perez used to work at Long Beach City College and is now at Cerritos and is doing a great job as an incumbent, although she's not recognized as an incumbent on this list. Larry Kennedy is at Ventura. I've known him for a long time, very active in Veterans Affairs. He's also on the board, but not recognized as an incumbent. And Lauren Steck is also an incumbent, but not recognized as such. I don't know why he didn't get the designation. He is the representative to the funding, student funding task force. He's got a PhD in statistics, used to teach at UC Santa Cruz, is at Monterey Peninsula Community College. Unless there's been problems or they, I get reports from people that incumbents are doing a bad job or not coming to meetings or not going to conferences, I always support them. That leaves, I think, four, three or four positions for the remaining vacancies, the three vacancies. And I've talked to people and these are just my personal views, but Suzanne Lee Chan from Olone, where we haven't had a trustee for a long time, is a very qualified candidate. She's been on the city council up there. She's doing exceptional things. Likewise, Barry Snell is at Santa Monica. He's a CPA and I've heard great things about the work that he does up in Santa Monica. So, for what it's worth, those are the people that I'm supporting and that'll show up.
Trustee Otto or President Malu, if I could add to that list, Barbara Dunceath?
Did I skip her?
Yes, she is also a faculty member. So, I think it's important to have somebody who served as a faculty member on the CCCT Board.
Yeah, I think I mentioned her, but...
Excuse me. I didn't, I wasn't aware, Doug, that you were casting your votes? I was just listening to you? Okay.
I wasn't.
Okay, all right. So, you'll need to ask each one. And my apologies for the incumbents listed. I don't know what happened to me on this board item, but I probably got a lot of interruptions. But I did miss one candidate on the list and then the asterisks for the incumbent, so... And I texted you the list.
Madam President, do we need a motion or do you just want the vote?
You can't have a, well, go ahead.
Okay, I move each board member be polled as far as who they would like to see on the CCCT Board.
Okay, Madam Secretary, if you would poll everyone and then we'll have a roll call vote after the tally is complete?
Yes, and the motion will be to submit the final tally, not to record your votes. We'll take your polling, okay? So, Vivian Malauulu, would you give me your choices and I will mark them on the ballot here?
Okay, so in light of what trustee Otto shared, I too was also aware that there were a couple of discrepancies on this list and I had mentioned to you that one of the names had been omitted. So, what I would like to do, if it makes your job any easier, is I would like to cast my vote for the sitting incumbents. And I'd also like to vote for Marissa Perez from Cerritos Community College District.
She is an incumbent.
I understand. So, I would vote for the sitting incumbents and additionally, Marissa Perez.
Okay, Marissa Perez is an incumbent.
Oh, she is. Okay, perfect. It's not, there's no asterisk on the list.
No, and that's what I said. The asterisks are actually after the name of the college and I don't know where I was when I was creating this item and my apologies. So, as of now, you have six choices that you've cast. Is that all you would like to?
Yeah, at this time, yes. Thank you.
Okay, Uduwak, trustee Antuck, would you like to cast yours?
Yes, I would like to vote for, yeah, there's eight positions, right?
There is nine.
Nine positions, okay. So, I also would like to vote for the six incumbents. Plus, add on Suzanne Lee Chan from Olone Community College, plus Barbara Calhoun from Compton and Barry Snell from Santa Monica. Was that too many?
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, you're perfect. You're perfect, okay. Virginia Baxter?
Yes, I'm going to make it easy. One through five, nine through 12.
Okay, so you have nine?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Otto?
And I would go Adrian Gray, Andrea Hoffman, Pam Haynes, Barbara Dunceath, Suzanne Lee Chan, Marissa Perez, Larry Kennedy, Barry Snell, and Lauren Steck.
You're at nine, thank you. And trustee Zia?
Yeah, I'm going to go with all the incumbents and Barbara Dunceath and Barbara Calhoun and Cindy Reese.
I'm sorry, who was the last one?
Cindy Reese.
Okay.
Who was the last one?
Cindy Reese, which is the one, actually trustee Otto, I had to text you because she was the one that was omitted from the list on the board docs. That is Peralta. She's not an incumbent.
Right.
Okay, now I will, if you'll give me a moment, I will tally across and give you the outcome, the results. Okay. We have Adrian Gray at five, Andrea Hoffman at five, Pam Haynes at five, Barbara Dunceath is at three, Suzanne Lee Chan is three. Down to Marissa Perez quickly at five, Larry Kennedy five, Lauren Steck at five. That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And so, the next, the ninth candidate will be Barbara Jean Calhoun at two. I'm, excuse me, Barry Snell at three. So, you have your nine candidates and this will be submitted by e-ballot tomorrow morning. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll have the motion and the second to submit the vote.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Secretary. And we will move on to item...
Oh, excuse me?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, we need to do that. Go ahead.
Did I have the motion to submit the vote?
So, trustee Antuck here, so moved to adopt the top nine candidates.
Thank you.
I think trustee Baxter had already made the motion.
Well, she actually made it before we took the polling, so that was sort of early.
I'll just second it.
Okay. Yeah, trustee Antuck made the motion, trustee Baxter seconded. Any discussion on that? And we need a roll call vote, please.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Cindy Zia?
Aye.
And student trustee Jimenez?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to, I just got a thing on my screen here. Moving on to item 5.3, this is an item that I agendized. I requested that this be put on the agenda prior to me being elected to this board. When I was still a faculty member, I know that the board at the time adopted a board communications plan. And in review of that plan, I just wanted to make a couple of points, both to my colleagues and also to the public, especially in light of some of the very contentious issues that have transpired in the last few weeks. There have been some instances of speaking to the press, which goes against the spirit of this communication plan and also all the training that we've had as trustees, that we have had to undergo new trustee training, professional development, ongoing trustee training and professional development. And every workshop, every session that I've ever attended, always just instilled in us that the board chair is the person who speaks on behalf of the board and on behalf of board decisions to the press. I spent two years on this board as a trustee, one year as vice president, and then the current year as president, and I always respected that, whoever was sitting in the chair's chair. I was very respectful of that protocol and I know that in the last few weeks, it's just been really disheartening to see some quotes in the press that really are putting across as if they are representative of the board. And the reason why I wanted to bring that up is because if this board, because this communications plan was adopted, you know, several years ago, I believe it was 2015, 16, if I'm not mistaken. But to give this board the opportunity to revisit that communication plan, perhaps we can establish an ad hoc committee if anyone would like to go through this communication plan and make some modifications or changes. And if the board doesn't want to, then we keep it as is. We just have to be very mindful that this plan was adopted by the majority of the board and that it would just be better if everyone stuck to it and respected it and had the same level of respect for each other that has been extended, especially with regard to speaking to the press. And that's, that was my reason for requesting that this item be on the agenda. I don't see anyone waving their hand or commenting, so if there is no additional discussion or if there is no additional possible action, then we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you all for your time. So, we're going on to item 5.4. This is scheduling of the December 16, 2020 board meeting. This is, this item has been on, up for discussion for several months now. And the reason why is because the district had to realign its elections for the even number, for the benefit of the public. There are even trustee area numbers and odd trustee area numbers. In this particular year, election year, the cycle covers the even trustee seats, which would be two and four, myself in Area Two and trustee Otto in Area Four. And we had to realign our elections and that posed a conflict for our board organization, our board reorganization. So, there are some very strict parameters that we have to work with. Elections have to happen at a certain time. Board reorganization has to happen at a certain time. So, Madam Secretary, I am going to defer to you if we just need to have a motion and go right into the vote or what is the board?
I think if everyone read the content, it is based mainly, first of all, the election change to December, I mean, excuse me, November. And then the term of office effective date was changed from the first Friday to the second Friday of December, which also affects when the county office, LACO, determines that we must have our annual organizational meeting every year, and that's when you select your president and vice president, your officers, which is within a 16-day period, which commences on the second Friday, which in this year is December 11. And then you're getting into the holiday time and the academic calendar is that week looked to align with our Wednesday meetings, although it's a third Wednesday. We played with different dates. We had suggestions to have the oath of office on a different evening and have a regular board meeting on another night. It didn't seem that anybody maybe wanted to come to that conclusion, so this would also include your oath of office. And your reorganizational meeting must occur the same period of time every year, whether you have an election or not. So, if you want to take it from there and vote or if anybody has any comments?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the December 16, 2020 meeting date.
Okay, we've got a motion by trustee Antuck and a second by trustee Baxter. Any discussion on that item?
I do.
Trustee, trustee Antuck, you made the motion. I'm going to, I saw trustee Zia's hand up, but since you made the motion, if you want to go ahead and speak on it, go forth and I'll come back to you, trustee Zia.
Sure. One, by adopting this motion, we are, we should congratulate President Malu. She will become the longest-serving board president in college history because it's so extended out for, I think, a year and a half, you will have been board president.
Of all the years, of all the years.
Who knew 2020? But this, you know, this, this item is related to a mandatory state law, SB 415, from a few years ago, that required election consolidation and the elimination of the April elections run by the Long Beach City Clerk and consolidated with the county, which we just experienced this past March 3rd was the first time we had a primary. And then the general election is in this November. Part of the issue, we went back and forth with staff and kept reagendizing this item. There was a misunderstanding, even though the election is in November 3rd of this fall, the election results are not certified until December 11th. And so, we couldn't see or confirm who the two board members are in the future. That'd be the same problem or will have the same kind of December exception that until the clerk says all the votes have been counted and has certified the election, we don't actually know who the winner of the elections are. So, that's why it pushed it back. And I know we had some misinterpretations and misunderstanding that you were trying to do it on December 8th, but the election wouldn't have been certified by then. So, I'm glad we got it fixed. I think it's a good thing. I also, you know, there's no runoffs in community college elections in California statewide. And I think we could have put it on the primary, which would have formerly been June, which would have ended up in March this year. But I think it's better in November because you have, you actually have a bigger turnout and you have a more representative sample size of the voters of the city and from each district. And actually, research shows that more young people vote in November elections. And so, you think about, we want to include our students, we want to make sure that, you know, we have a full democratic process where everyone is, has access to it. I mean, there's been a bunch of changes on vote by mail and voting centers now, early voting for 11 days. The state is really pushed to make it easier for people to vote. And by beginning in November, I think we maximize the opportunity for the community to select the best representative of their choice. But I think it's also, we're doing a good job by doing November to align with the California Voting Rights Act to make sure that we also have more diverse electorates voting in November elections. And every two year, you know, one, every two years, it's either presidential or gubernatorial, so general elections. And so, you have a bigger turnout, of course, more big, the biggest turnout during presidential general election. So, I just want to ask my colleagues to vote in favor of this and thank fourth secretary Han for her work on getting all the wrinkles ironed out on this, and I think it's an important move for the colleges.
Trustee Zia?
Yes, thank you for that background, trustee Antuck. I was going to make a recommendation or friendly amendment. The date that is being proposed falls under, it's the sixth day of Hanukkah. And I wanted to see if it's amenable to the board, if we delay it another week. It'll make you even longer, longer serve the president, Chair Malauulu. But, and it won't fall on Christmas, just, just a thought. So if there's anybody who would like to entertain that friendly amendment, I'd like to make sure that it's, doesn't fall on Jewish holidays.
Trustee Untuck, are you amenable to that amendment? And trustee Baxter, I saw your hand there waving.
I would say my, my objection to it would be, I think that the campus and the college is closed for winter break the next week. So I don't, I don't know if it's feasible to go another week back. We were trying to keep it as close to the December 11th date as possible so that, you know, we would have the election certification done before the meeting. But I don't know if, if maybe Vice President Scott knows about our academic calendar and when the campus closes, or at least right now is planning to close in the fall.
One other note, trustees, is that the term is effective December 11th for any newly elected or reelected officials. And the term for the outgoing ends the same day. So you cannot go too long without having somebody who has sworn in to be able to approve or board actions or sign financial documents or that sort of thing. So that's just one thought about how waiting too long. And I think the next week through, into the 18th would still fall within the 16 days. But I can't see the calendar right now. I know we do have that item.
It's actually on the agenda for 2021. And it does show that week as grayed out as winter, spring, winter or spring recess. Campus closed.
That's correct.
Madam Secretary, trustee Baxter, I, I got you, I got you right now. Madam Secretary, I'm wondering, even though our meetings are always scheduled on Wednesday, just to be respectful of trustee Zia's request that it falls on the last night of the Jewish holiday, is it possible that we could have the meeting instead of December 16th? We could have it on December 17th, even though it's not our normally scheduled day of the month?
Trustee Malauulu, Hanukkah ends December 18. December 16th is the sixth day.
Okay.
So that's why, but I mean, we've had meetings while the campus has been coming closed and admin staff still work. But whatever is the desire of the board, I just ask that we respect the Jewish holiday as well and just make accommodations. If it's not too much of an ask and impact, it would mean a lot.
Okay, trustee Baxter?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say, I appreciate trustee Zia bringing this up. And I personally have no objection to the 23rd, except that lots of times people travel at that time. And so I think we should be aware of this. Now, I always go on New Year, at Christmas Eve. So as long as you don't make it Christmas Eve, I'm fine. But I'm favorable to whatever compromise can work out.
Let me say too, if you would always schedule your reorg meeting around the same time of each year. So if you change it to the 23rd, and I'm not sure if people would be here for the holidays because the next day is Christmas Eve. And that is one of our recognized winter break holidays. But the following year, that might not fall into the same situation. So sometimes those holidays change based on the committee who approves our board-declared holidays. So that's all I'm going to add. So I'll leave it to you all, whatever you decide.
Okay, I'm also agreeable to whatever is the pleasure of the board. But Dario and Myra, I did just get a text from Vice President Dr. Scott. She said she's muted, and I believe one of the trustees mentioned her name in on the academic calendar. So maybe we could unmute her and if she's got any input on that.
Okay, thank you. Are you looking, you're looking at December 2020, correct? And the 23rd?
Correct.
One of the changes that we're proposing for the calendar is to have us working that week. Because the way the calendar had been negotiated previously was that we were scheduled to be off those early days, the 21st, 22nd, 23rd, then we were supposed to come back between Christmas and New Year's, which was a problem as people relooked at it. So right now, we were scheduled to, we're scheduled to be working the 21st, 22nd, 23rd. And until we negotiate something with the bargaining unit, we're scheduled to be here the 24th.
Wow. Okay. You know, I, I agree with trustee Baxter. I have no objection to meeting on December 23rd. And I also see trustee Zia's point that, I mean, you know, our last meeting was on a Saturday. So we've already kind of set a precedent to meeting. And I'm not asking staff to come in on a Saturday, obviously. But if, you know, if it's possible, I have no problem having a meeting on the 23rd. You know, none of us probably want to be there at that time. But, you know, we do what we got to do to make it happen. Any, any additional discussion, objection, comments?
I can't remember if I moved or I seconded, but I'm willing to amend the motion. Trustee Untuck, I think you moved and I seconded.
That's correct.
The motion as it stands, trustee Untuck did not accept trustee Zia's friendly amendment. So the motion that you have made and seconded is actually to continue with the December 16th board meeting. So I just want to be clear that everybody understands that that's the motion on the floor. Everybody good with that? Okay, all right. This requires a roll call vote, Madam Secretary.
What, what is the vote again for?
December 16th.
Virginia Baxter?
Nay.
Vivian Malauulu?
Nay.
Uduwakjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Okay, motion failed, so. So we could revisit it again at a future meeting, right? Because we have to agendize it properly for the December 23rd?
I would, because I actually feel, after hearing the conversation too, that I need to check with LACO on the, because I feel that next year, or we may not be able to do December 23rd for what day that falls on or close to that. I need to find out how this is going to align with their requests. They, they tell us when we must have their reorganization besides the 16 days.
Okay.
And the lack of.
You think we should have a special meeting on Saturday to discuss this?
You know, trustee Otto, I detected a difference in the way you said this nay than the way you've said other nays. Because I feel like you think you're going to be here anyway, so.
This one was N-A-Y. The previous one was N-E-I-G-H.
That's, that's what it is, right? Okay, so you're, you're going to be long gone on another.
Maybe.
You can care less if we're here on a.
Maybe.
Excuse me, may I ask Jenna Jimenez her vote, student trustee, for her advisory vote?
Hi, yes, I'd like to consider Sunny Zia's request, so I would have voted nay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, so the motion fails. And we will be seeing it next month on the agenda again differently. So everybody stay tuned for that. Thank you very much. All right, we're moving on to item 5.5 on the agenda. This is the 2019-2020 board agenda schedule. This is an information item only. And this is basically just what we see on the agenda. Superintendent President Bynum, I defer that to you. Is there anything that we need to be flagged for that in that section?
You know, at this point, no. I just haven't had the time to go through it appropriately. And I'm wondering whether or not some of the things have been completed on this. So I'd like to put it together with the other board requests and just take a look at them and make sure I've got a good understanding of what we're doing here. It's clear that there's some things coming up. You know, one question I might have is whether or not we can do some of the presentations that are listed if we're on shelter in place still. But I'll take a look at it and get back to you all.
Okay, how long have you been on the job? It's been a week and a half since you've been on?
Yes.
Okay, so you can only say that you need more time till the next meeting?
I know.
That you can't say that you need more time? And Dr. Scott, I saw you doing this, but were you waving or were you cleaning your screen?
Let's see.
You're, you're on mute. You're on mute.
I was probably trying to make my, trying to mute myself and make my face go away.
Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, so we're going to move on to section 6 on the agenda. This is a, the consent agenda. Are there any items that anybody would like to pull from consent? All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion and a second, please.
Move approval of the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second. All right, trustee Otto made the motion, trustee Zia seconded. Any discussion on that? Okay, Madam Secretary. So Madam Secretary, I have a question. Under 6.1, you have, if we have any items removed, but we don't. But then under 6.2, you're asking for a roll call vote for items 6.3 through 6.21?
I'm just informing you that the consent contains items 6.3 through 621. In the event, we would have pulled an item and then had to act on separately.
Okay, got it. All right, so no item has been pulled off the agenda. So we will go for a roll call vote, please.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
And advisory vote, student trustee Jimenez, with the exception of 6.20 and 6.21 personnel items.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries. We are moving on to section 7 of the agenda, academic affairs. 7.1 is a revised academic calendar for the remainder of this year. And then 2020 through 2021, 2021 through 2022. And this also requires a roll call vote. And there are subsequent attachments to the agenda. I encourage the public, especially if you're a student or an employee of the district, to go through and print those calendars out. I'll entertain a motion.
To move.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion by trustee Otto, second by trustee Zia. Any discussion? And Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Advisory vote, student trustee Jimenez?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries. Item 7.2 on the agenda, new, modified, and inactivated courses. This is also an action item that requires a roll call vote. I'll entertain a motion.
To move.
Second.
We've got a motion by trustee Baxter and a second by, was that trustee Zia?
Yes.
Okay, by trustee Zia, any discussion on that item? All those, oops, sorry, roll call vote, please.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
And student trustee Jimenez advisory vote?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, noted.
Sorry, I'm, I'm too fast. I need, I need to pump the brakes a little bit. I'm getting excited.
Point, point of order? Isn't, isn't the, isn't the student advisory vote supposed to go first for, for our new policy?
It has, it has, and we have not been following that. You're correct, trustee Untuck.
Be to mute her.
My apologies for that too, because on board docs, she's not included in what the vote, what I'm reading from. And trustee, our board president Malauulu should have been calling her name out first when we were at our meetings together on her paper. But we have failed to follow through with that one. So I will take your recommendation and change that around for the next items. That's correct.
Interesting, because the, the very first vote that we took this evening, when the student trustee wasn't called on, and then the board secretary went back and called, I thought that that established the precedent and kept, you know, we just kept in line with that. Jenna, that makes two today, so thank you very much. And you've been so gracious to, to not rock the boat or wave your hand. So we appreciate that. But yes, moving forward, if you do need a student trustee advisory vote, we will most certainly call on you first there.
Sounds good. No worries. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on. Oh, that previous motion carried. We're moving on to item 7.3 on the agenda. This is a modified program of study. This is also an action item that requires a roll call vote. And it has attachments there on the agenda. So I'll entertain a motion.
To move. Second.
You need to do this first?
I, I think trustee Otto. Yeah, I'm sorry, trustee Baxter, did I miss hearing you?
That is fine. It's fine.
Okay, so trustee Baxter made the motion, trustee Otto seconded. It's, it's hard listening to the audio on the, with the technology of this meeting.
Yes.
Any discussion on the item?
That was Doug Otto. Was the second, you said?
Yes, trustee Baxter, trustee Otto.
Student trustee Jimenez advisory vote?
Aye.
Noted. Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We're moving on to section 8 of the agenda. This is human resources. And 8.1 is the California Community College's Classified Employee of the Year. This is an action item, and I will defer this to Vice President Gene Duran.
Thank you, Board President. I appreciate that. Each year, generally at the May meeting, this year moved to the July meeting, the Board of Governors of the California Community College honors classified employees who demonstrate the highest level of commitment to professionalism. The Board, and Board of Trustees, this one included, may forward to the chancellor's office the name of one, only one, even though we have an exceptional team of classified employees. We wished that we could actually nominate all of them. I'm sure you would all agree with me. This year, the district is recommending the nomination of Aaron Turner, who works in facilities. And for those of you who don't know, Aaron Turner was hired September 14th as a custodian. He works under the expert direction of Cheryl Williams. In addition, in normal times, you'll see Aaron, along with his classified colleagues, working at events, setting up tables, setting up chairs, setting up everything, from College Day to professional development to trainings. And in addition, doing the hard work of cleaning it up. No one really recognizes that. When everyone leaves, that room has to be returned back. There is a reason that our facilities are in the exceptional condition that they are. And our meeting facilities go off without a hitch, and our events are so successful. When I think of Aaron, and I've had many conversations with him, I think of someone who is service-minded, someone who's gracious, someone who's highly personable, who's an incredible team player, and more importantly, like the rest of his colleagues, like the rest of our classified staff, very hardworking and dedicated to supporting our processes and those employees, our faculty, and other staff who directly support our students. And for that, we are recommending that this board endorse the nomination of Aaron Turner for this award.
All right, thank you, Vice President Jean Duran. That was a really well-done introduction and explanation of why he was selected. Is there?
I'd like to make the motion.
Okay, there you go. I need a second. All right, so motion made by trustee Zia, seconded by trustee Baxter. Any discussion on that item?
I, I just wanted to say that Aaron is an excellent choice, and he's a superstar, and I'm very proud to support his nomination.
I agree. Thank you very much. Okay, so at this time, Madam Secretary, we'll move forward. We have a motion in a second. We'll move forward with the vote, please.
Student trustee, advisory vote?
Advisory vote is aye, but I was also under the impression that I couldn't vote on Human Resources.
No, it's not all items. It's about compensation and salary. We can accept your advisory vote on this item.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. And Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Now we're moving on to 8.2, Employment Contract. This is for Eugene Carbonaro, Dean, Career Technical Education. This is an action item. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
We've got a motion by trustee Baxter, seconded by trustee Zia. Any discussion on that item?
I just wanted to say how grateful I am that we have Jean. I see him, you know, constantly participating. He's just been a great guy. He's been a great pick. And I'm excited to see what he brings to the table for this contract term. And given the challenges, I've seen him in action, and I really appreciate him, and I want to congratulate him in advance and just tell him to keep up the great work.
I concur with trustee Zia. Jean has been, you know, the, the campaign that we launched, the trades are back. A lot of that largely has to do with the great work and effort that Jean has put forth in that department. So we're very grateful for your 12-hour days. I, I know that you miss being a faculty member and the flexible schedule. But, you know, welcome, welcome to the club. You've done a great job. Trustee Otto, I saw your hand.
Yeah, and I wanted to just second that. I, I've watched Jean for a number of years, and I think he has absolutely, completely, totally come in, come into his own as the dean. I think he was held back, and now that he's the dean, he's doing a fabulous job, and it's his destiny. I don't think that we should make him the president of the college yet, but he's, but I think about it. So anyway, he's just doing a great job.
Jean, I don't know if, if you're tuned in or not, but those are the words that people say when deep down, they mean something like you can't ever leave. You're stuck forever, and you can't leave. So thank you very much. All right, so let's take a roll call vote, please.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Jean. Item 8.3 on the Agenda, Employment Contract for Dr. Noel Corral, Dean, Counseling and Student Support Services. This is also an agenda item. And you know what? I apologize, Madam Secretary. There was a readout on the previous motion. Would you like me to go back and read that out for Jean Carbonaro?
Yes, to correct the record. That would be fabulous.
I apologize. So I'm going to backtrack a little bit back to item 8.2 on the Agenda. I do have a readout. Motion seconded and approved. The employment contract, which provides for a term of employment from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2022. Annual compensation of $154,083, health and welfare benefits, and life insurance. And I'll move on to item 8.3. This is also an action item for Dr. Noel Corral.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. Any discussion on this item?
Trustee Inta here.
Okay, I, I saw trustee Zia's hand. Trustee Inta, I'll circle back to you.
I just wanted to say how lucky we are that we have Noel. He's incredible, and I can't wait to see him continue his great work. And just really grateful and want to express my gratitude to him and the work that he's done for our district. And I will gladly cast my yes for him.
Trustee Inta?
Yeah, I just wanted to voice support for Noel. I know he recently completed his doctorate degree just recently, so I want to congratulate him. And I also know that it had some personal family tragedies happened recently. And really, our thoughts and prayers with him and his family. We want him to continue to stay here at Long Beach City College and do the good work that he's done. And just, you know, he's a, he's a great guy, great administrator, and we're happy to have him back.
I would like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, trustee Zia and trustee Inta. Dr. Noel Corral, if, if you were with us a few months ago, we did a high school orientation, and his new name is Noeli Corelli. That was his rap name. We are very lucky to have you. I see you. I see you doing the work. I see you and our students. And just very grateful of the amount of time that you put into that position and making sure that the Counseling and Student Support Services runs efficiently and is always student-centered. So, you know, I'm very excited for this opportunity for you. Any additional discussion? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Before I do, would you read the statement, please?
So the employment contract provides for a term of employment from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2022. Annual compensation of $167,000, $67,145, health and welfare benefits, and life insurance.
Thank you. Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Dr. Corral. Item 8.4 on the Agenda, Employment Contract. Paul Creason, Dean, Health and Kinesiology. This is also Dr. Creason here. This is an action item. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved.
We've got a motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Otto. Any discussion on this item? Dr. Creason, I would like to just, you know, the same thing we've said about Jean Carbonaro and Noel Corral. I, I believe that you're doing an amazing job with the, being the dean, serving in the Health and Kinesiology Department, and our students are very fortunate to have you there. One of my favorite activities is always the nurse pinning ceremony, and you just really take ownership of that event. And I just want to commend you on the great work that you're doing there on behalf of our nursing in particular. So thank you very much. We have a motion in a second.
Please read the statement?
Yes, ma'am. The employment contract provides for a term of employment from February 28th, 2020 through June 30th, 2022. Annual compensation, $163,467, health and welfare benefits, and life insurance.
Thank you. Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Okay, we're moving on to item 8.5, Employment Contract. Sylvia Lynch, Information Technologies Officer. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Otto. Any discussion on that? I know, I know we have a lot of contracts on the agenda today to approve. And because we have such an amazing core of employees at LBCC, we could probably be here all night talking about them. I personally want to express my gratitude to Sylvia for helping me and the rest of the board through all of our technology needs. She's got an amazing team there, Tim, Myra, Dario. She's just got this whole crew of people in technology, and she oversees everything, even like Mark with the telephone. So Sylvia, I'm very grateful to you. Thanks for always responding to my texts when I have a computer glitch or question. Very happy for you, and this is well-deserved. Any additional? All right, we've got a motion in a second. And the employment contract provides for a term of employment from July 1st through June 30th, 2022. July 1st, 2020, excuse me, through June 30th, 2022. Annual compensation of $184,814, health and welfare benefits, and life insurance. Madam Secretary?
Thank you. Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Inta? Is he there? Uduwak?
He's got it on mute.
Okay. Doug Otto?
I'm talking.
Uduwak? Yes, thank you.
Yes, sorry.
There you go.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item 8.6 on the Agenda. This is for Anthony Pagan, Associate Dean, Career Technical Education. This is also an action item.
So moved.
I need a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. Any discussion on that item?
I, I, I want to say, I'm sorry, it's going to be my last time.
Okay.
This meeting, but Anthony is the man. He, he's, he's done a great job at our CTE and vocational programs. I've seen him in action. One of my friends donated his electrical, their electrical car, and Anthony was just incredible in making sure we receive it and get our students set up for training. So I'm really excited, Anthony, for you, and I'm excited to vote yes and really grateful for the work that you're doing for our college.
I agree. Ditto what trustee Zia just said, Anthony. Thank you for doing such an amazing job. All right, we've got a motion in a second, Madam Secretary. This is for the employment contract, which provides for a term of employment from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2022. Annual compensation of $131,748, health and welfare benefits, and life insurance.
That was a good catch, President Malauulu. Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. So now we're going to item 8.7, the employment contract of Coach Brett Peabody, Director, Operations Head Football Coach. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Inta. Any discussion on that item? All I have to say is go Vikings. Good job, Coach Peabody and team. We look forward to more of the redemption coming up in the next season. And, you know, thank you for the work that you're doing with our student athletes there. I know it goes beyond football. All right, Madam Secretary, this is for the employment contract, which provides a term of employment from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2022. Annual compensation of $108,239, health and welfare benefits, and life insurance.
Thank you. Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
I mean, aye. I'm sorry.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so we've got only 37 more contracts to approve. Just kidding. Next item is 8.8 on the, I saw that, CC. 8.8 on the Agenda. This is the employment contract of Edward Henders, Interim Director, EOPS Care and Next Up. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. Any discussion? All right, we, you know, like I said, we can do this all night, but very lucky. Congratulations. This is for the employment contract, which provides for a term of employment from April 6, 2020 through April 5, 2021. Annual compensation of $103,604, health and welfare benefits, and life insurance. Madam Secretary?
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're moving on to item 8.9, Employment Contract of William Husak, Dr. Husak, Interim Athletic Director. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Everybody wanted to do that one. That was a motion made by trustee Otto, seconded by trustee Baxter. And any discussion on that item?
We're lucky to have him.
I'll never forget what Dr. Husak said when we first met him. He said that the one thing he keeps failing at is retirement. I hires, and then he keeps coming back to work. So we're glad you're failing at retirement. We've got a motion in a second for the employment contract, which provides a term of employment from April 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2020. The annual compensation of $155,65, health and welfare benefits, and life insurance. Madam Secretary?
Thank you. Virginia Baxter?
May I ask a question? May I, before?
Yes.
Why is his contract ending September 30th when we were going to put off? I assume because he really does want to retire, but I thought we had a freeze on, on hiring.
Well, I can speak to that. So our interim contracts are typically approved for one year. And so his contract was, one-year mark was essentially going to end at the end of this month. And so it works, because we weren't able to go through the hiring process based on our coronavirus response.
Right.
We're extending him, as well as the other interim dean, in a, for six months to allow the search committees to reconvene once this is all lifted.
Okay.
Maybe.
Okay, then I put aye.
I, it was going to have something to do with, that was the only term that his wife approved. All right, Madam Secretary.
Okay, we have Virginia Baxter, aye. Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto? And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 8.10, Employment Contract for Yvonne Gutierrez, Interim Dean Enrollment Services. And I'll entertain a second, a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. This is for the employment contract, which provides for a term of employment from May 23rd, 2020 through November 22nd, 2020. Annual compensation of $167,145, health and welfare benefits, and life insurance. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Secretary.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations to Yvonne. Thank you for the great work that you're doing. We're very lucky to have that team there, especially in Student Support Services, so thank you very much. Item 8.11, this is the, for Barry Barnes, Interim Director, Operations, Head Coach Basketball. I'll entertain.
So moved. Second.
All right, we've got a motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. And this is for the employment contract, which provides for a term of employment from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Annual compensation of $88,134, health and welfare benefits, and life insurance. Any discussion? Trustee Zia?
I just want to congratulate Brett. He's amazing, and he's brought our students in our MLK parade almost every year that I've been attending. And he's just, his energy, the way he inspires the students is just magnanimous and infectious. So I just want to congratulate him and tell him we're really lucky to have him and keep doing what you're doing. And if I recall correctly, he went to high school with Jeff Wood, if I'm not mistaken. So that's a fun fact for you.
All right, thank you very much. I'd just like to congratulate Coach Barry. Also, great job with our basketball team. Go Vikings. All right, Madam Secretary?
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Motion carries. That was our last, congratulations, absolutely indeed. That was our last employment contract.
President, before you go on, I have a question that I, I assume cannot be answered tonight, but I would like to have the answer. In looking, how are salaries determined for the management team? And, you know, it's interesting how they're all over the board, which I understand, and it's got to be based, I understand, on years of service and if you have a doctorate and things like that. But maybe at some time, somebody could explain exactly how these are set?
So I will defer that to Vice President Jean Duran, if you'd like to, you'd care to weigh in on that?
And, and Jean, you don't answer the, the whole thing. I was really thinking for the future to, to get this meeting to go faster.
Sure. So, you know, in, in general terms, I'm happy to, we can provide more separate for you if you want. It's, it is based on exactly what you said, experience, work experience relative to how other individuals are hired. But I can give you more detail later if you like.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to item, thank you, Jean Duran, for that explanation. Item 8.12, this is the LBCC EFT Initial Bargaining Proposal to the District for Full Contract Renewal. This is an action item that does require a roll call vote. And all of the articles are in the public content on Board Docs, so I would defer to the public that they go to Board Docs and pull up the agenda, the items that we're discussing, the articles that are being voted on today. Madam, I, I need a second and a motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Zia. Any discussion? All right, Madam Secretary?
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Motion carries. And now the last item here under Human Resources, 8.13, this is the District Initial Bargaining Proposal to LBCC EFT. This is the Full Contract Renewal. And this is also an action item that requires roll call votes and it's got three separate articles. Again, for the benefit of the public, you're able to log onto Board Docs and view each article. I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Zia, seconded by trustee Baxter. Any discussion? Madam Secretary?
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Inta?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we are moving on to section nine on the agenda. This is Student Services. Item 9.1 is the Updated Registration Date. This is an information item only. I will defer to Dr. Munoz. Dr. Munoz, I'm not sure if your mute is on or you've left the meeting.
No, I'm sorry. I apologize. I stepped away for a moment to use the facilities, but can I, I'm back online.
All right, so 9.1 is all you, the updated registration dates.
Yes, apologize. So the updated registration date, so just as a quick update, the Admissions and Records Team has been working with both Michelle Grimes-Hillman to push back the registration date. We would have started registration for summer. Unfortunately, we realized that with the coronavirus, it would have just really created a lot of conflicts for students, especially with transitioning counseling to remote counseling. So we wanted to give us more time to build the infrastructure so that we can be ready, more nimble to support students. So we've pushed registration back a little over a month, as well as this provides us an opportunity to continue to work with the Long Beach Unified School District students. At the time when we'd made the decision to push registration back, it was still kind of unclear whether or not, how quickly we would be able to return, as well as how quickly Long Beach Unified School District would return. So at this point, we're looking at starting registration later than we originally had hoped to, but we feel that it's still much more earlier than it has been in previous years. So that should not create too much of a negative consequence for us by moving registration back.
Dr. Munoz, do you have any, I mean, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but do you anticipate any issues with enrollment or enrollment numbers with the change in date?
So-
I'm sorry to put you on the spot like that, but I know that you're a problem solver and you've probably thought some of the problems through.
So just to offer some, some things, we, we actually have a dashboard that's created that captures applications and monitors students as they move through the matriculation steps. And because we had front loaded so much of our efforts out in the LBUSD School District and some of the other high schools that sent students to us in large numbers, we actually are up significantly in applications, ed plans, and orientations from the previous year. So as far as new direct high school matriculants, I don't anticipate there to be too much of a negative effect because we really came out the gate so early with our strategies. However, you know, there's still, I think, going to be a lot of work we need to do with continuing students. And that's where we're gonna need to put a lot of our efforts. And so that's when we're gonna do some data mining. We're gonna look at different student groups based on unit attainment and do some really targeted interventions to make sure that we get them to come back with us. Once we start to implement the excused withdrawal process, which will happen over the next few weeks, we will have a better understanding what the impact that COVID-19 is having on our students. And that will probably be a telltale sign of what's to come with registration for next year. But I will say that the counselors are ready. They're very eager to support students remotely during this process. And so I think we will be equipped to handle this. But as far as the concrete data, we will, probably won't have that for about four weeks. But like I said, as far as of direct high school matriculants, I'm still confident that we should be able to, to maintain our growth because we did so much front loading. And as far as our continuing students, that's still kind of left to be seen, but we're gonna be very targeted in capturing those students and bringing them back to us if students happen to leave because of the coronavirus. And like I said, that excused withdrawal group of students, we're gonna really manage that cohort so that we engage them for summer and for fall.
Okay, and then just one last question, and you might not be the, the person to be able to respond to this, but if a student has to, you know, opt for a W and withdraw because of COVID, you know, have there been any stipulations put in place to protect students and their grade point average from just a normal W?
Yes. So we are receiving guidance from the Chancellor's Office. In fact, the Chancellor's Office today hosted a webinar regarding COVID response. And so there is going to be guidance released later this week that's gonna provide us guidance on the withdrawal process. But we will be able to implement an excused withdrawal process that will not hurt students in terms of their academic standings, their academic progress, probation statuses and whatnot. There still are some implications regarding federal financial aid, depending upon the time in which exercises the excused withdrawal. But nonetheless, the excused withdrawal is a much better option for our students than the traditional withdrawal. Both colleges and universities, transfer institutions specifically will recognize that excused withdrawal, especially noting that it's during this time of coronavirus, a state of emergency. So I don't anticipate that that will be an issue for our students. And obviously, the communication that we're getting from the Chancellor's Office is whatever system we do implement, which will be the excuse withdrawal, it's done in a way that is not too laborsome for students. It's kind of streamlined and fairly easy for students to activate an excuse withdrawal.
Well, thank you for that. You actually answered my next and last question, and it was regarding financial aid. How would the change in the enrollment dates impact the financial aid calendar and students, you know, having the, the disbursements to be able to enroll and pay for their classes?
So registering, by pushing registration back a month, that will not have an impact on next school year's financial aid. On financial aid, it's already been started to be, those ICERs are already being downloaded once upon, upon a student applying for a FAFSA and listing LBCC school code. So in terms of the ICERs being processed and those things happening impacting students, there really shouldn't be any implications. There are some implications for financial aid around excuse withdrawal and whether a student applies for an excuse withdrawal before or after the 60% mark of the semester. And so that's why we're just beginning to start to look at our processes and how we're gonna implement excuse withdrawal. That will be a factor we'll take into consideration as we're advising students on their options.
Thank you, Dr. Munoz. Anybody else on this item? All right, that is an information item only, so we're gonna move on to section 10 of the agenda, which are reports. Point one, our Academic Senate President, Jerry Florence, take it away.
Thank you, I will. Good evening, many of our students, for many of our students, Long Beach City College provides not only an outstanding education, but as a college community, we provide vital life support in the way of faculty mentors, forward-thinking administrators, compassionate classified staff, nutrition through the Viking Vaults, physical and mental health services, monetary support through financial aid and scholarships, and always a sense of calm in whatever storm they are facing. During the challenging and somewhat unnerving time, we remain committed to their academic, physical, and emotional well-being. In the last month, the leadership of the Academic Senate, the Classified Senate, the LBCC FA Association, Faculty Association, CHI, and AFT have worked countless hours collaboratively supporting our constituents while putting the students and their success first. Thank you to Robert Remetta, Karen Roberts, Diana Ogomachi, Cece Sadler. I value your selfless service and I am so glad to call you friends. A special thank you to Sylvia Lynch, her entire team, and Hassan Keshu and his entire team. We have been able to navigate a lot with all of your help and you guys have been superstars. Thank you so very much. My deepest gratitude to the full-time and adjunct faculty for quickly embracing the need to move from face-to-face classes to remote instruction. This was a Herculean effort and in a very short amount of time. They didn't just rise to the occasion, they soared. Congratulate colleagues, excuse me, colleagues such as Dr. Wendy Conig, Michael Neal, Michael Robertson, Suman Mondanari, Maureen Baker, Melvin Cobb, and others, reached out to those with less technology savvy and worked collaboratively to ensure the smoothest possible transition. Also, Dr. Wendy Conig worked with the Curriculum Committee to address issues that had the potential to impact instruction. I am humbled and honored to serve with this amazing team of educators. In the last month, there have been several circumstances that created waves across the campus landscape. I join others tonight in saying that without the leadership of Dr. Kathy Scott, Executive Vice President of Academic Affairs, we would have been adrift. She quickly righted a tilting ship, set out clear navigational goals, and confidently reminded all of us that the students are the stars in our constellation and that if we worked together, we would not capsize. While tonight, the sea is not completely calm as we deal with the COVID-19 virus, we are in control of our Viking ship and in, and we are indebted to a creative, committed, and fearless captain. Finally, on behalf of the Academic Senate, I would like to extend a very warm welcome to Luann Bynum, who has returned to Long Beach City College as our interim superintendent president. We are fortunate to have her institutional memory and we are glad to reestablish our very strong working relationship with her. Luann, it is wonderful to see you on campus. Welcome home. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Jerry. We will move to item 10.2, Classified Senate President, Cece, take it away.
So, we would like to commend Robert Remetta and the Classified Union E-Board for their strength, commitment, and professionalism in representing the classified during this crisis. It's, it's been a relief to many of us that the decision was made to have Luann Bynum return to us as interim superintendent president. The fact that she could step right in, like Jerry said, knowing the city as well as she does and knowing the college as well as she does. And we get her for six months, so we don't have to worry about a transition for a while. That's very, it lessens a lot of anxiety for people because we don't know what's gonna happen in the next few months. This is an unprecedented stressful situation and everyone is doing the best they can. We've seen such kindness, creativity, great problem solving, and wonderful little stories of people helping each other. The commitment that LBCC colleagues have shown to our students and our community has been immense and heartfelt and taken on with a great sense of responsibility. Like other difficult incidents we've had in the past few years, this situation has shown us that our weak spots, as well, has shown us our weak spots as well as our strengths. I like to comfort myself, because I'm a nerd, when thinking about how fun it is gonna be to watch us make improvements when this is all over. So the classified are adapting. A lot of people are working from home. Everybody's supporting each other and we're going to be able to get through this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cece. And now we'll move on to Board Reports. I'll open up the floor for any trustees that would like to share their report. Trustee Baxter?
Yes, thank you, President Malauulu. Before I give my report, I asked my husband how bad my face looked on the screen. And so I want to explain what happened to me. Ironically, on Friday, the 13th-
Dave, Dave has a right to remain silent.
No, it's, it's not very exciting, I'm sorry. I, I hit, I hit my head. Actually, I hit my head and I hit my knee. And my knee's swollen and I've been obsessing about that, but I found out the head injury is worse. And so I'm, I'm gonna be fine. I, but I wanted to explain because I thought people might think not nice things about my husband and it has nothing to do, my husband has to do with my lack of balance.
You do seem more reasonable tonight.
But you know what? Maybe it did have a, maybe the hit on the head did help have that effect. Thank you, trustee Otto. It's amazing how in one month, things have changed. On February 27th, I was at the Mayor's Fund for Education. On the 28th, I was at the STEM Conference for Junior Middle School Girls, which was held at LAC. I did give the, a keynote address for Women's History Month on March 3rd. Then on March 4th, I was at the Rotary Scholarship Committee meeting. March 5th, I spoke at Lakewood Rotary. March 7th, I put together a program on human trafficking in Long Beach. And on March 12th, I was at a CCEJ Board Meeting. And it's amazing that since that time, life has totally stopped. I'm, I'm home putting ice on my knee, watching, I shouldn't probably be telling you this, watching videos, watching The Crown. As a historian, I've been enjoying it very much. And it's amazing how our life has changed. In the meantime, while I'm sitting on watching TV, people are working very, very hard. And I just want to say, I truly appreciate everything everyone at the college is doing. I think we should be very, very proud of ourselves for, for what has been accomplished and it's because of outstanding leadership. And I just want to salute everybody. That's it.
Good job. Thank you. Any other trustee? So I, I, for my board report, I would like to deviate from the norm. Usually trustee Baxter and I are in really deep competition of all the activities that we support, both at the college and around town. And I agree with her, my, my calendar outside of work, evenings and weekends, was absolutely jam-packed a month ago. And little by little, the emails and the texts start coming in that events are canceled. And just, you know, life as we know it has completely changed with the shelter-in-place and the safer-at-home mandates that we are obligated to support. And I believe rightfully so. so. I would like to take this opportunity, and I know that it's been said a couple of times, to remind everyone that this is the first time that the college district has had to host a meeting remotely where it's an all-remote cast, and it's the first time. So I would just really like to thank the IT, the team there for the tremendous amount of work they've done, having to learn all of these systems, having to get so many people hooked up on a Zoom meeting, testing audio, scheduling appointments, so that we respect the social distancing that we are required to maintain. So it's just been an incredible labor of love. It really makes us appreciate those we have on campus. Now, you know, we'll be here all night if I have to sit here and thank people individually and even groups individually, but, you know, we thank everybody, we love everybody, we're grateful, but I really want to acknowledge the work that the facilities team has done also, because they have a very difficult job of coming into work and cleaning and making sure that everything is absolutely sanitized. And then, of course, our faculty having to learn complete systems and processes. It really makes us appreciate what we have. Outside of the college, I think there's some irony there in the fact that we now have to recognize truly the work that teachers and warehouse workers and grocery workers, airlines, those service workers in those industries, their truck drivers. We've really taken that for granted, and I think this is great that as a society that we are being forced to really recognize how much we value the work that they do, in particular healthcare workers. And I know that Long Beach City College, with the work that we do educating and training our nursing students, really goes to show how valuable that work is and how important it is. And I do believe that that industry will grow in the future because of this. Of course, I'm very biased, and I'd like to recognize the work that my sisters and brothers on the waterfront do, longshore workers, ILWU, that we keep that cargo coming, and we often have to work in harm's way. So we're doing what we have to do as a society. But there's also, I'd also like to recognize those who are not working, those who are not able to work. I have personally spoken to some students who have shared with me that they are no longer working. I have spoken to a couple of students who shared with me that one or both of their parents are no longer working. So we need to be sensitive to that. So as educators, when we log on to our Zoom call or our instructor or our Canvas, we need to remember that while we are in the business of educating students, we are human beings first, and we are connecting with students who are probably experiencing a lot of difficulty at home, with a lot of insecurities because of the way the job market is now and the way finances are now. And I do, I am very concerned about what's going to happen in the next couple of weeks. I would also like to thank everyone and encourage everyone for what they've done and to continue being flexible, being patient, being understanding. This is the time to dig in. You know, I was kind of raised with the motto that there are two kinds of people in this world, there are problem makers and problem solvers. This is the time when everyone really needs to be a problem solver, and I know it's very easy to complain, especially when things are new, and this is our new normal, and we're not happy about it. But we really need to take stock in the fact that we have a social responsibility to each other. And I heard a quote today that says, "Social distancing does not mean social disengagement." So let us remember that. And with that, I am just...
Trustee, President Malauulu.
Be well and be safe. Yes, trustee untouched.
I just wanted to be recognized the next, once you're done.
You got it. Yeah, I was done, you got it, thank you.
Thank you. Just briefly, want to touch on three things. One, I want to say thank you to the four vice presidents, Dr. Scott Munoz, BP Drinkwine in Durant. I know on March, you know, this past month has been a wild month for us, and a lot of turbulence and the leadership change. And I really want to thank them for their courage to stand up and speak truth to some inaccurate information that was sent to the newspaper last month, and their joint statement that they do not have the same experience, recollection of some of the false information that was put out there, I think is really a testament to their character and their ethics, but also their commitment to our college and our students. And so I just wanted to say thank you. We, I recognize, I think the board recognizes your joint statement and your communication to the campus community, I think was important in the wake of our leadership change. I also want to call out and thank Dr. Scott. When the COVID-19 virus information started happening, we had a couple of phone calls of just sharing information from what we were doing in the state, to share what, you know, with the campus community on campus and how she was starting up the task force team and getting information together, making sure that we're, you know, she was connected with the city and the county and getting the right information. And, you know, she was very calm, collected, and cool, under fire, organized, you know, and it's, I think it shows, you know, we're talking tonight about the update in the last two, three weeks, you know, really want to thank her for her leadership through this global pandemic. You know, who knew it was going to get like this, you know, three weeks ago? And then last, I just want to close on kind of a statistic that should get all of our attention. You know, 1 million Californians filed for unemployment in the last two weeks. So that means 1 million people in California got laid off. You know, we typically have an inverse relationship when the economy is bad, more students enroll. And it's going to be very interesting to see how that relationship plays out there with the virus and the pandemic. But I hope in our summer and our fall sessions, that, you know, we're looking at kind of the last night was for recession, last time there was an enrollment bump, that we can figure out ways to open up our campus again and be ready to help folks who need to get immediate job training, you know, get vocational and skills, certificates, you know, and plus all those folks who now may want to come back to college and finish a degree or transfer. You know, we have to be ready for that group of folks, and it's going to be, I think, you know, the wild ride is just beginning. You know, we've been talking for months about the potential recession coming, and it is here. And I think, you know, I've called, you know, friends and family and talked about, you know, personal and financial planning and just be realistic, you know, that this is going to be a multi-month effort and experience. And I know we're getting ready to kind of button down the hatches on campus, but it's, I think this is going to be a very big recession that's here, happening now. And just to keep that on folks' minds, that this is, this is just the beginning of it, and we got to see how we ride it out. But kind of like we were saying earlier, you know, I believe that working together, collaborating, standing together on the relationships we built with our students, staff, employees, management, board of trustees, we can navigate and make it through this pandemic, but it's going to be a long and wild ride. But I just wanted, that number of 1 million people in the last two weeks that got laid off of California is just really staggering. Keep us, you know, as we're isolated, and I've been working from home for almost 12 days now, that it's just kind of getting, keep that top of mind that, I mean, there are people who are physically ill, but then the financial pain of being unemployed or trying to figure out family situations, it's going to be really tough. So that's all I have for my report, and thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Otto.
And I'll be brief, I second everything that the other trustees have said, but I want to call out if briefly our interim superintendent president, Luann Bynum. You know, she didn't have to take this job. She was happily retired, sitting on the Harbor Commission, doing the things that she really, really enjoyed. But her commitment to Long Beach City College, to career technical education, to community college education, I think made her decide to take this opportunity to provide the leadership that we need here at Long Beach City College right now. It's a new day, it's a new ship, and I, I think it's a lot of work that needs to be done. I'm so encouraged by the reports of the vice presidents tonight and what I've watched during the transition. But it's all about leadership at this point. It's all about doing what it takes to get us through this difficult time and into the future. And I want to thank you, Luann, for your willingness to forego all the things that you had going for you in order to come back to try and get Long Beach City College back to the place in this community where it has been forever and ever. And I just am looking forward to working with you to help start doing that. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Otto. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Trustee Zia.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to report on, but I just wanted to thank you, Chair Malauulu, for recognizing our workers, and especially the ones who are working in our grocery stores and, you know, you're right, it's unfortunate that it takes something like this for us to appreciate. But I certainly have been even more appreciative of all our workers. I mean, it's just incredibly, an insurmountable amount of work right now. I also, on a happy note, I wanted to mention that tonight, there was a $2 trillion package that was approved by the senate. So Americans will be getting checks. Those who earn up to $75,000 will get $1,200, and children as well, for each child, $500. So I'm glad that there's at least some relief, but I'm with all of you in that we need to tighten the belts and also, yeah, the big one is coming. It's unfortunate, but it's, and this too shall pass.
That's right, that's right.
That's right. Thank you, thank you. Anything else under trustee reports? Okay, are there any, section 10.4, any board travel? All right, seen none. And 10.5, any trustee committee reports? All right, Madam Secretary, item 11.1, are there any public comments on non-agenda items?
No, President Malauulu, there are none.
All right, so I'm going to move to adjourning into our second closed session. Before I do, because I know that it'll be difficult for, if you are part of the public and you are tuning in, I just want to get a little bit ahead of the game, when the time comes later this evening for me to formally adjourn the meeting. I would like to adjourn the meeting, not now, I'm not adjourning the meeting now, we are going into a second closed session, but when the time comes to adjourn, Valerie Butcher is, was a resident in my trustee area, and she was very active in the Wrigley Association, and she passed away the weekend before our last board meeting. And I had her name written in my notes, and I don't know what happened, it fell through the cracks, and I did not acknowledge her. So tonight's meeting, when we do adjourn, I'm going to adjourn it in memory of Valerie, who was a very integral part of my neighborhood, Wrigley, and also West Long Beach. So just to put that out there. And then the last thing that I want to share with you, to end on an add note, when the meeting started today, I did not personally know anyone who had COVID. So when we called the meeting to order at 4:30, I'd heard of people, but I didn't personally know them. Since I've been sitting here at this meeting, three people who I actually know, I've gotten texts and I've seen messages, that three people who I actually know in this couple of hours that I've been conducting this meeting have fallen to, not fallen, but have contracted COVID. So it's out there, it's real, be careful, take all necessary precautions, be well and be safe. And at this time, Madam Secretary, it is 9:16, and we will move into a private room for our second closed session.
And will you be reporting out for President Malauulu?
Probably, I'll defer that to our board council event viewing, but likely yes, because we do have some action items.
Okay, so we will remain?
I believe so, we'll try to...
Okay.
Quickly as we can.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Myra, Dario, thank you so much for an outstanding job getting this meeting out to the public. And now we need to go to breakout rooms.